Okay, so welcome to the, our first ever East Hampton orientation for new city councillors. Again, kudos to councillor Hayes and Smith who thought of this was important to get going, so thank you for your efforts on that. We're probably gonna be jumping around and we have other city councillors here to bring in their points of wisdom as we go along. I see they started off with a subcommittees, which is a great point, that some of them there are actually descriptions of what they do. A lot of them are not working to make that complete. As a summary, again, it'll probably be expanded upon, but appointments, that is the committee that any mayoral appointment comes to, which is essentially, I think basically any appointment in the city. I mean, there are some, there are some direct appointments that don't come through us, but the vast majority of them come through us and we, as the appointing authority, approve them. At first goes to appointments committee and then voted on generally by the whole committee. Their terms vary depending on what kind of board they are, whether there be a single department head position or whether it be a multi-membered body, but that will be expanded. Joy, you have something more to add to that?
Yeah, the city council has direct appointment control over the assessor, the city clerk, and the auditor. Those are our three city council appointments. The rest of the appointments are appointments that are made by the mayor to all of the boards, such as the health board, planning board, things like that, are all made and brought to us by the mayor and we can either yea them or nay them. And then we have a certain time period in which to take action. And if we don't take action on the appointments, then they will automatically become appointments.
So, so these are the open positions on the website that people just volunteer, write letters to the mayor?
Correct.
Some of these are also paid, some of these are, yeah, they're paid positions too, you know, like the assessor or vice director.
Right, but those are our appointments. The mayor does not appoint the assessor.
But does the mayor also appoint paid positions?
Yeah, like finance director, that's her appointment.
Well, yeah, but the, yeah, those are her appointments, but they, they're directly under the city side of her operations as the city CEO.
So, finance subcommittee, obviously, they, they cover most everything, financial, any kind of expenditures, discussions about loans, discussions of transfers of money between budget lines within the same budget as well as if they need supplemental, if they need money from outside their but, their specified budget, those are all discussed. So, everything kind of financially based. When it comes to budgeting, which you'll find out as the council in general, we have right to take money away from a line item, while we don't have the authority to add money to an item. So, you know, in today's budget-
Or to reappropriate.
Or to move it to somewhere else. So, we can either say, no, that's too much money, cut it, but that's kind of all we can do. And in today's budget, that rarely happens or that happens.
I think it's only happened once.
Should, um, should we have somebody making notes within this? Like, it seems kind of weird that we don't actually have a description of the finance subcommittee.
Yeah, well, my thing is because-
What the roles and responsibilities of that may be.
Obviously, because we're talking off the top of our head, I'd rather sit down with someone who's thought to it and maybe-
Yeah.
Each committee, I know that Jen has asked us-
Yeah, that might be a good thing.
-in appointments, to put together a job description type of thing, so she could add it into this stuff.
Why don't we do that for every subcommittee this is missing? We can submit to them, you know, could you please come up with a paragraph on your responsibilities? That'd be great. So, ordinance covers basically all the ordinances in the city, which varies from traffic to trucks and bicycles to-
Signs.
Ordinances, you know, zoning, so it's a huge area.
It is big.
So, we have, we have documented the correspondence of ordinance.
What do you mean by that?
Our city charter or ordinance.
Oh, yeah, so like an example of that?
All of our bylaws, all the city-
All of our bylaws.
So, I feel anxious because I understand you guys didn't get something that looked like this, right?
No, we did.
Oh, you did? Oh, bar, certainly you did.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, no, that, no. We got a binder, we got two binders.
It's similar, right? So, you'll find in there, like-
It wasn't pretty.
This is the, this is the quick and easy version.
Beginning of it is the whole room charter, which we'll touch on-
We've got, we've got that.
And then throughout all the rest of it are all the different city ordinances. Here's vehicles for hire. We go through it and discuss, you know, taxi cabs, where they're permitted, permitting any-
It's also all on the website.
Can we make the ordinances?
Yeah, it's on the site too.
Yep.
So, sewer and water.
It's just five different, instead of one.
Yeah, it wasn't all in one binder, but I did-
Yeah, yeah, that's what I heard. And then there's zoning ordinances, you know, setbacks, et cetera. So, any kind of, you can, you know, I think it's pretty self-explanatory if you sit down and just look through it as far as what ordinances are where.
I think it's part of that is trying to keep it updated.
Yeah.
It's on the website too. Your most recent copy is gonna be-
Yeah, on the website.
Yeah.
That's where you want to get the information.
Yeah.
And that'll be one of the notes that I make in this, that this would be a good idea to have on the website. We won't get them on the website if it's not there.
Yeah.
So that we can submit a list and say, these are the things that we want to have available.
Yep.
Property subcommittee, it doesn't, it's not usually that busy, but occasionally the city has surplus property that we have to dispose of. It is the council's, subcommittee's responsibility to come up with at least, you can help me here, JP, at least recommendations. Do they come up with a price too, do they come up with a price?
Sometimes, it depends.
Set, set the price or-
Minimum.
Have a minimum price. It's generally for real property, but I would imagine personal property could be an issue that could be referred to the property committee. Generally, the city owns lots of property. Now, we also have the power of eminent domain, we can take property for public purposes. We can sell property.
Easements.
And we can take it, easements, there's land that we rent.
We only deal with, we only deal with property we own. We're not involved in like-
No.
Management property.
What's, no?
No.
That's if you're reading my mind incorrectly.
Okay.
I can't get the word. We don't deal in anything like, what's the word I'm looking for? Marking a building is uninhabitable.
No, that's a building inspector, health inspector, health department and all of them, yeah, that do all of the codes.
Public safety. Councillor Hayes, you wanna tell us what we do?
Um, we work closely with members of the public who have situations where they think there should be like a speed limit situation, or a street light situation, or a parking situation, anything that has to change the rules of the world as long as it's not involving anything that's like an immediate need as far as fire, police, and safety and whatnot. And it's also to kind of keep track that all of those things are actually happening when those ordinances go by. We are also working on rewriting our street acceptance protocol, which is this other piece that I brought in. This is kind of what we deal with is a lot of, the money for streets and street repairs comes through what's called chapter 90, right? And you'll learn what the different buckets of money coming from the state are. There's chapter 90, there's chapter 70, there's chapter 50. So, chapter 90 is done, which has to do with how we repair our roads. So, this is kind of a description of what those funds can be used for and what their funding formula actually is. So, right now, we're working on a street acceptance protocol because it's based on the miles of roads that we have in East Hampton. And we have very old records, so we have a lot of roads that aren't accounted for, so we're missing out on a lot of, on 50% of whatever those roads are funding. So, we're trying to get that through because you will find, regardless of what office you're running for, people just wanna talk about potholes.
It's, uh, it's, the committees are also responsible for stop signs, no parking signs, limited parking signs. We don't have any control over speed limits. That's usually set by the state.
Yeah.
Well, we always get requests to slow the traffic down or fill a pothole or-
However, there could be coming.
There are, yeah, yeah.
The humps of the road, the curbs coming out for crossings on the roads. So, there is traffic coming, which is a quick one.
Okay.
Which we tend to do very closely work with public safety, because like those are decisions we make, usually we suggest this would be approved.
And the Department of Public Works.
And what we do is we kind of hold the meeting and we invite, you know, whoever had made the initial request, if I look at speed, we'll invite, you know, a representative of the police department, any other neighbors from there. The other thing that we do a lot of are telephone poles. The many times we come to change a telephone pole, it's the rise in our charter or move one, it comes through public safety. And it's important to go out and actually look at the physical area of the space and make sure that, you know, these telephone poles are put in front of somebody's nice door, right? Make sure we go and, and make sure that it's not gonna be, you know, visually detrimental.
And then also is the rules and regulations, they, they pretty much, it's mainly dealing with our city council rules, which we'll go over briefly here as well. Occasionally, we'll occasionally get a technical question or that will refer, like for instance, councillor Hayes was asking about electronic agendas, so that would be, you know, he said their rules and regulations, we'll discuss it, just say, you know, recommendation, and then we'll vote about it for council, so let's find an example of where it's from. I'll quickly go through the parts of the charter that relate to us, where the legislative branch, so I use the article two, right, I believe it, article two. And then, a lot of this is pretty much, you may know, are self-explanatory. There are nine members, four at-large, five precinct councillors, two years each, basically any voter who's over 18, or, yeah, each one was like, electable. There is something in here as far as, I think it happens here where, you know, nothing matters, but, you know, if you left your term of office right now, you said, I'm outta here, you know, and I think if it's within the first 18 months-
Don't give her any ideas yet.
Then they go back to, I think you have to get 30% of the highest vote count, but, but then if you got as far as like six months away from the new election, then they just take, I think, anyway. I think there's like four people's names, I mean, they have to be, they have to be written in, but, but, so hopefully that will not happen. The council president is-
I'd be worried about being in there.
Some of this is duplicated with our city council rules.
Oh, no.
So, basically, the city council president runs the meetings.
Door to least taken person here.
The president can't be a chair, is ex officio of every committee, and so if you ever have only two people there, then the president can't be a voting member. Sometimes that happens with finance, if there's something important that someone can't make it, they wanna make sure he's a full vote on it. The vice president basically is around in case that needs to, the president isn't there. We had changed it, for a while we had the vice president couldn't be a chair of a committee, but we changed that because it kind of limited the number of people we could have as chairs of committee. There's a little bit here that about, you can have two, you can't be paid by the government so-
Right.
For the city, for two jobs, so you can't be-
Can't be, you can't be-
I can't be the dog catcher or animal security officer, because all of a sudden like, oh my god, I'm the animal inspector, but like, oh, that's right, I'm not getting paid. That's not a problem.
You can't, you can't hold two paid positions.
Yeah, exactly. I said, oh, sure. And then if, once you leave, you have six months-
Right.
Before you can break and take a position.
And I think to go back, any city council, I think, go to any-
Yes.
Subcommittee meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and are strongly encouraged to, because actually that is one of the biggest, I often think, what must it look like the public watching some of our meetings? It must look like the Stepford line, so, yes, yes, whereas the nitty-gritty of like, what do you mean by that? Can you explain that again? That all happens at the subcommittee level. So, a lot of people, I think, are disappointed how little discussion we see at the full council meeting because most of it's been aired out, so, yeah.
With only a small amount of people, rather than, so, I mean, if, if you don't go to the subcommittee meeting, it's hard to actually get input into anything.
Because usually the per, like for instance, if it's about a fire truck or it's about a police car, that's where you can ask chief of man, you know, did you check, you know, fuel efficiency on this vehicle? That's where you can ask those questions. I mean, don't get me wrong, at a public hearing, you can ask those questions too. So, there's always opportunity at that public hearing, but it's, most of those questions are asked still. We do get a stipend. The only big thing about that, every once in a while, we, I don't know if it's every term we do-
No, it's every-
Every, anything that's zero, every, every term, anything that's zero.
It's in here.
Charter review?
No, just about salaries.
Salaries are every, every-
Every term.
Every term.
You can do it every year if you want.
You can do it every term, right.
And, but you have to do it in the first 12 months of the term, of the new term.
Right, and it doesn't go into effect if it-
Doesn't go into effect until the following term.
I'm sorry, what are you talking about, changing the salary?
Yeah, kind of how to change your salary.
A request to increase any of the salary school committees, city council, or mayoral has to be done within the first 12 months of a new sitting council, and once it's passed, it won't go into effect until the following election.
And that's to protect more or less from voting yourself.
Exactly.
Right, because they're already happy. The two of you could be go like, we're up.
That's exactly what it is.
Do it.
Yeah, that's exactly why, why it's that way, yeah.
Hey, we just had mentioned the review of the, how often we view the money.
Oh, and you don't, you don't get to access any city benefits.
Right.
The, your retirement will be put into what's called a OBRa account, and you can talk to the treasurer about that, but it's put into an OBRa account, which gains entry in a little bit of interest in whatever.
You should have all the information about that when you speak with Barbara, because you have to sign on, read and sign everything. So, there should be an explanation of the benefits such as they are.
Yeah, we don't get health benefits or anything else that was excluded out of the charter.
Yeah, I've already thought of that.
As far as meetings to go, you know, it's the first and third Wednesday of every month up until May, June, July, and August typically are just the first Wednesday of the month. Occasionally, if we have difficult budget, we might take one of those Mondays at the beginning of the summer, but usually June, July, and August are just once a month. There is the option, which I think we used a couple of times for special meetings, if we have a timeframe, time limit that we have to cover. The council president actually, actually even says here, three or four members of the council can, in writing, request a special meeting. And there's, again, the requirements for having it are listed there. There is also another term, which I'll probably give you for, the term is out, called an executive session, which is essentially usually when we were talking about something personnel matter or something private.
Or property, real property.
Yeah, where, where essentially, we don't necessarily want it to be passed immediately. And there's a negotiation, strict rule or protocol of how we announce, we're going to an executive session for this reading, for this reason, all those in favor, I agree with you when we come in here. And then they are held private until a period of time, and there's, again, there's requirements like if it's a personnel matter, that person is still working there and may not be, ever be, be made public, but anyway, that's something-
Because we oversee some of the employees at City Hall, there may be situations where we have to discuss like-
Those three that we need are responsible for?
Yeah, it's like, all right, there's been a routine tardiness, this is our policy on tardiness, we're gonna have to do a first written warning, we would have to do an executive session for that.
So, that's what the mayor was talking about last night for the assessors, we said something that he was in the files, we all would have accessed.
Right, yeah.
If we wanna go and take a look at it.
Right.
Anything involving human resources, you have to make sure it's, it's done privately.
Yeah, and sensitive issues too, like it wasn't directly human resources, it's about when we were, since it's been paper, when we do it, councillor Psychowski, we had an executive session to see what would be the best way to answer it. So, those kind of, sometimes those things happen.
There should be a review period, which I'm not sure what that is, but technically you're supposed to review all executive sessions that are in the books for to see if that can be released.
Yeah, I think what, you're probably correct, I think what tends to happen more than, someone requests one and checks to see if it's-
Then they review it and then they release it, yeah. If it's something that, like, we were negotiating about a piece of property or something to buy and whatever-
It's over, done deal.
Once, once, once we buy or sell the property and, and the deal is said and done, then any executive-
Release everything.
Meeting minutes become available to the public, they're released.
I'm thinking of the personnel issues that may have occurred, there's certain things-
Some of those will never get released for personnel issues.
Could be a long, long time before they're ever-
Okay. All right.
Two seven, access to information in general, we have access, we, as a whole body, we have access to a lot of different agencies, employees, if there's any information that we need to have, you know, we have the right to, to ask that, we do, it tends to be, needs to be done as a body though, the city council needs to request this versus individual councillors saying, hey, why do you do this?
And B, what Joy was just saying, so like, city council may require any city officer, member, agency, city employee to appear before it. I was saying that, you know, we hadn't met the new city engineer, it'd be nice to have him come to city council and introduce himself.
Right, right.
Because nobody knows who he is or how to contact him right now.
Is that the guy that keeps moving people?
Yeah.
Some of us.
Yeah, I do. I love him.
He's a good guy.
I love him.
It's not, that's like an institutional sense, like-
It would be fine, it would, it would be-
If the city has hired a new individual, they should present themselves before city council.
And, and while we're on-
Thanks.
While we're on the subject of different bodies within the city, there, there are certain bodies that basically can't be touched by us or even the mayor, and that would be the health department, parking rec. I, I think the board of parking rec.
I think that comes up, we might wanna stick with the agenda.
Oh, does it come up to? Oh, okay, all right, all right, then.
Just to not, like, throw too much information, just to keep it along with how it's going.
So.
So, basically, it's two seven, is we have the right basically to call most anyone in front of us for information, but again, needs to be done more as a body where we take a vote to request it versus individuals. As Joy and we had mentioned earlier, we have three appointments, the city auditor talks a little bit about their responsibility, at least their terms right there, the principal assessor, who we just hired a new one relatively recently, and I, I haven't read the review personally, but I hear it's very good, city clerk, of course, you'll know, Barbara Lee would be a mess without her, she's outstanding. And then she's also our clerk of city council, which gets reappointed as she takes our minutes.
But she doesn't have to be, based on this, right?
No, no.
It could be.
She does not have to be.
Yeah, right.
Why do you have to have a clerk tonight?
Because Barbara's always applied for it.
No, 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 tonight.
Oh, we've never, we've never had a clerk at, at any of these meetings. We've always appointed somebody to take notes or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, it's a good point, I mean, it is, with this technically a city council meeting, which she is our clerk, all those other meetings are subcommittee meetings, which she's not the clerk, or the licensing board, she's not a clerk, but I didn't think to ask her to come for this.
This really, this really isn't in a committee though, I, so I don't know if we would have to take-
It's a public city council meeting.
It is, it is a public meeting, but it's, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Can I ask an off topic question?
Yeah, of course.
And this is only because it just flowed through my brain.
All right.
Do we have protocols about notifying each other when you, when you can't attend, when you're taking vacation, when you're gonna be away? Do we have some sort of a internal protocol?
Usually people just contact the president and just say, I can't make it.
And now, what about vacations? Do we have to like give you, like-
You don't have to, but it's probably easier to know so that-
Just email everybody and go-
If anybody can email, just email me or Barbie, just so we know.
Yeah, we don't have an actual procedure or code. I mean, I suppose we could use what the city itself uses, but I'm not sure what their policy and procedures are.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it's typically, we just let the city council press down.
Yeah, it usually hasn't been, we've had a couple situations where it just sounds like three or four were gone, but you didn't have a quorum, or, not a quorum, but you didn't have enough to pass anything officially, but usually so.
Very, very, very rare.
I text Smith because my car broke on the way here. Oh, that was the one I was texting.
Yeah, I was like, I- I just usually throw a text out to Jones, say, I'm not making any meetings, let everybody know.
Is there an attendance, sorry, just keep with that, but is there an attendance, required attendance amount for city council?
There is.
For quorums, yeah.
And it's in here somewhere, okay.
No, in terms of the actual city council.
No, like how many meetings you could miss.
If you miss a certain amount, like, you can be recalled, I can't remember.
Where did we see that?
No, we never had that.
No.
No, that's not in there.
I think I've written that.
Yeah, that's, yep. Did that change after Wesley?
That'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, I don't, that wasn't in the original.
That wasn't in the original.
So, just so we can move along, as we're not, oh, no, 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 they're great questions, I just wanna continue. So, emergency ordinances, I don't think I've ever been here for one where truly is an emergency, you know, a true emergency where we needed to pass something immediately. This is a good point to mention, so typically, if anything comes in front of city council, which we'll talk, how did you do something to city council, for you guys, it needs to go to subcommittee. There are a few exceptions.
Snow emergency.
Resolutions, you know, usually something you can vote on, but the vast majority of things need to be referred to subcommittee before they can be voted on. And that is also, you'll sometimes hear the term first reading, second reading, and typically, and I know councillor Hagan was very good at that one, like, when all of us are subcommittee chairs and we'll get something and we'll talk about what it is and then we'll say, you know, I'd like to make a motion to refer it to subcommittee. That essentially is the first reading, meaning it's the first introduction of the topic. Councillor Hagan would really say, the first reading is, you know, and it was a little easier for finance because there was supplemental appropriation to do this, blah, blah. And the second reading would be the final reading when you're voting on it, so it's a two read. Now, someone told me, Jen, maybe you come in, do I think we have three readings or something bizarre? Okay, you know, okay, I bet there's something.
Can I derail us again?
No, no, of course.
On the agenda last night, I noticed on each item, there was like a date and then another date in parentheses, so is that like the first time it was raised and then you pushed it out so it doesn't fire?
Yeah, so, the first day you see there is the date it was recorded by the city clerk secretary of what was essentially given to our agenda. The second date, the first time that would, the first day you would see there is 90 days later. Technically, the business, all business should be completed within 90 days. However, there is nothing that prevents anyone to keep on asking for either 30, 60, or 90 day extension. There is not, they don't, I mean, after a while, you may say, whoa, that's like three years, you know, but-
I mean, is that that you extend it out because you either A, haven't gotten enough information to resolve it, people haven't been around to discuss it, blah, blah, blah?
And you will see, and I'm sure Jen will attest to this, that surprisingly getting information in a public municipal situation can be painfully slow versus, and private practice, private sector where it's pops around more. But, yeah, more often it's like you're still accumulating information.
And when we only meet once a month to the car, you know, if, if so-and-so isn't there, because they're like, there's, it's just better to go on, there's sometimes with street acceptances, you know, if there's snow on the ground, you can't see the street. So, you know, it's like there's another, another few months. But that one took me a while to figure out as well.
So, there are a couple of things in, and I always get them confused, so, let me introduce them, but I'm sorry, exactly-
What section are you on, Jen?
Uh, 29B. There are two, or at least two procedures, which are not used commonly, but I guess if you feel passionately about something, can be pulled out of your hat. One, if you, if you are a member, objects to taking of a vote, you can, I don't know what the term they use for, but you can ask for the vote not be taken. It has to be second by, table, second by a second person. And then, I guess it's just, just by a second person, and it should be postponed until the next meeting of the city council, regular or special. And so, when it, then when it says it was taken up for a vote, the next time, then you need four or more members to postpone that vote. And that can only be, can be posted not less than additional five days. Again, you can read it more carefully, but just kind of introducing that there is this, this is this procedure, and it says here, it should not be used more than once for any measure withstanding. There is another term called a reconsideration, which is literally after a vote has been taken, you can ask for reconsideration.
For the next meeting.
Which for the next meeting, could, could be a revote. I think at one time we had, it was said that it was from the majority vote, a person from the majority vote, but I think the last city council will be changing it, that either a majority or minority person, if someone wants that vote reconsidered, it can be postponed for another meeting. So, again, I, I recommend if that's something you have in your mind, to go back and read the procedure, because I'm just paraphrasing here.
A motion to reconsider requires a majority vote.
Right, a majority vote. So, I just wanna make sure that you're aware those, they are there.
Okay.
Speaking of another thing, this is actually in city council rules, but something I didn't realize, councillor Hayes, when councillor Kuzitsky, she, you blew her away with your pass. Pass? What's a pass? I've never heard of a pass.
You can pass and see how other people are-
I didn't pass.
No, 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 you didn't, but we're saying that besides yea or nay, and abstain.
And abstain, there is a pass.
There is a pass.
Like, not interested.
Yeah, no, but you circle back.
No, pass.
Oh, really, I'm thinking about it? Thirty seconds, I'll make my decision.
So, it lets you go, if you're like, it's, you're number three, and you said, I still need some thought, you can pass, and it's not abstain, you're out of it, you're saying no, but a pass just puts you back in the cycle to come back around.
Sounds like you're waiting to see what everybody else says.
And that, that was used, a real life example of that was used by councillor Hagan. He had a vote about, you know, creating more legal licenses.
And he was kind of sitting up on his fence.
And, yeah, he was a little back and forth about it. I think he had a vote of conscience and a vote of, didn't wanna hold up the city, but there were a handful of us who had to abstain because of what that we do with, and so there was a very small pool of people who could actually go on the issue.
One vote would have meant the difference.
And one vote would have made the difference, so, you know, he did a pass and then was able to-
And at the end of it, he said, I don't wanna be the one vote that makes the difference, so.
And he, councillor may change his or her vote prior to the announcement of the total tally too.
Yeah.
So, if everybody's voted and, and it's-
Three to two.
You were, you were kind of like on the fence and you, you were, you said no initially, but then you think, meh.
So, you can change.
Maybe it's not worth that for me to do it that way, maybe it's better that I just go along with it and say, yes, you- go along with it and say, yes, you, you, you can do it, but you need to do it and be recognized by the president before the tally's taken.
Well, he moves pretty fast.
And I was going to say, that's something that we've talked to each other about. It's this style that he.
Slow your roll.
And he needs to slow his roll.
It's a good thing, it's a bad thing.
Wrist is right there next to him, too. He's like right on it.
Whispering in my ear the whole time.
It goes far too quickly.
Waiting minutes.
And, and even people watching can't.
What just happened?
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's good to know. Thank you. I'm serious. No, 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 not joking. No, I know.
I don't mean that negative thing.
No, I know, I know. You're right.
Yeah, maybe count to three.
I wish there was something. I must have left my rattle brain. I can't remember. So some of this, again, I was, you know, some of this we talked a little bit about, you know, but just a councillor, if you leave your terms early, there's again, the whole, it's consistent with the whole thing.
He's on section two ten, two eleven.
Yeah, two ten, two eleven.
He's now moving to seven four.
Four, seven four. Yeah. Who says I go too fast? Petitions to school committee. I guess that's actually just because, oh yeah, I know what I was going to say. So publications are, as far as, you know, there are a lot of state laws requiring legal notifications of things we're doing, public hearings. Barb takes care of all that. So she is aware of what topics we have, number one, require a public hearing, and then number two, require advertisement. And so she, that's actually, I'm not sure if it's part of our budget.
It is part of our budget. I just looked at it briefly.
What's the difference between public hearing and public speech?
Excellent question. Yes, public hearing is the official, which you'll notice that we, it's supposed to be at six fifteen.
Yes.
We try to go a few minutes either, I mean, I try to go for six fifteen, but if we go a little bit over, it's not, we don't start before six fifteen. Sometimes it may be five minutes.
Because people have to have the opportunity to show up.
Exactly. And if they're planning a break or something for that time, they need to be able to count on that. So, but yeah, that is where the second reading happens, where we are going to vote on that object, on that topic. The chair tends to introduce the, whatever it is, tends to give all the background information they have, you know, accumulated during the, the subcommittee meetings. Usually you'll say, our subcommittee vote was three zero in favor, two two, I mean, two one, or whatever it might be. And then, as part of public, after the city councillor's chair speaks everything they want to say about a topic, then the chair, president usually says, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address this topic? And then a lot of times it's out of curiosity, we, we bring any city officials who want to talk to it first, but then anyone from the public who may want to come up and speak to it. And then after everyone has spoken, then it goes back to that chair, that committee, and they do it in official motion. And, you know, and then you'll see, it's important, you can say, I'd like to make a motion that, or you can say, I'm requesting this in a form of a motion. I mean, there's either way you can put that word, but it's important for, that you say, motion in there somewhere of what you want to have done. But there needs to be a second, and then, then there is allowed more discussion amongst councillors. And this was, sometimes we get into trouble where, you know, we have something somewhat controversial, someone makes a motion, a councillor seconds it. Okay, now we're into the point where this is only theoretically for councillors. Then all of a sudden, there's some question that Melissa has the answer for. We're like, oh. So occasionally, we have had to go back up and say, you know, councillor Hayes, we withdrawing your motion, yes, you have to back up so that person can come in. But we try to, you know, make sure everyone has said their piece. But again, once we have that second, that first and that second, we go around again for the councillors can say again, their kind of closing thoughts on it. But then there's no more public at that point, and then we take the final vote and that's it.
Does everything that goes through a subcommittee get a public hearing?
No.
No.
So what makes it a public hearing though?
That's general law.
Yeah, there's some, I, it's a great question. I mean, those are great. Most of them are finance, but in ordinances.
Like the telephone polls.
Telephone polls.
They come up, that we're going to do this. Well, we'll set us up a public hearing, and we'll do that at the city council meeting prior. So if I'm giving a report on public safety, it'd be like, you know, we're working on this, we're working on this. I'd like to set a public hearing for this telephone poll because at that point, we've met, we've discussed, we've taken a vote on it as a subcommittee, we're ready to go to the next step.
Ready to hear from the people.
Yeah. And then what we usually do is we invite everybody who's involved in the subcommittee level, which we, you know, representative from ever so close, and maybe the fire chief or the police chief or something like that.
Okay.
So that gives everybody a couple of weeks. And that also puts us in compliance with the amount of time we have to announce a public hearing before it happens.
Okay.
Almost all appropriations are public hearings.
And ordinances.
In chapter thirty-two B, the health insurance for the city employees was discussed. I believe there was a public hearing. I'm not sure if it was.
We had two public hearings.
Legislature.
Sometimes, yeah.
Or just, it's a matter.
Yeah, that was.
Well, and you'll see that at meetings, like we'll, we'll even discuss it at city council, be like, do I have to set a public hearing for this? And, you know.
Barbara will tell you.
Barbara, we're usually not, you know, like appointments, we don't have to set a public meeting for it.
No.
Okay. We could, at any given moment.
At any given time, you can.
Say, you know what, this, this particular appointment seems to be contentious. We're going to set a public hearing for it.
Okay.
Anytime you want to have the public weigh in, or you feel it's a good thing to do, to give it a couple of weeks and to allow more input, if you don't feel it's gotten, you know, the attention that it, you can absolutely.
Appropriations, ordinances, and things like that all have to be also advertised. That's the biggie is that those are the ones that have to have the public hearings are the ones that are advertised per mass general law.
We're very prescribed.
And that's one of the things we're looking at.
Barbara takes care of that, right?
She does. And that's one of the things that we're looking at in regards to going more electronic, is that the attorney general's office has come up with a compromise so that right now, our public hearings are posted on a newspaper that is behind a paywall. So nobody can really see it. There's another website that lists all the public hearings and those are available. But if you write a letter to the attorney general, you can say that, you know, we're going to do it this way and comply, or that will be on our website. So that's something that we're trying, you know.
That'll save a lot of money.
I'm hoping it'll save us some money. And it'll also make it more available to the public, because otherwise it's behind a paywall and it doesn't help anybody.
And not everybody gets paper.
No, and everybody gets some paper.
I don't get it. I don't get it.
So, I mean, I almost feel like sometimes we have better luck opening up the window and yelling that we're going to have a public hearing.
I read the newspaper, and I'd really be feel left out.
If it's for bids or procurement of bids and things like that, it all goes up on the estate.
I think another example, we didn't need a public hearing, was at the liquor licenses. I don't think we needed a public hearing.
No, we didn't.
But again, it was so controversial.
Sure.
It made sense to the public.
It's never a bad idea to have the public in anything.
So just seven seven, talks about school committee, which is, Dan probably knows more than, I guess for me, I think.
Can I just?
Yeah, sure.
So seven four is districts. You'll notice that in East Hampton, we don't have wards and precincts. We have districts. So it's just the way that our particular form of government is structured.
But we're called precincts, though.
They're districts. They're districts.
But why are we calling precincts?
That's you.
But I mean, that's just the math, too.
Oh, you know what?
It's precincts.
It's precincts and then it's districts and ward.
Oh.
We're precincts, though.
We're precincts.
It's precinct, too.
It's districts and wards and the other ones.
So you're precinct count.
Right.
Yeah.
Precincts.
Yeah.
Why the district then?
I, it's something about how our particular form of mayoral government is structured and it's.
It was how the charter was structured.
Yeah, my top did it. But that keeps us away from wards. And I think it's based on population. Like we just kind of squeak in as a city.
So what is it, district broken up into wards?
I believe so.
See, I think a district is like literally an area, whereas the precinct is the voting, the voting, voting part of that. So we probably have five districts and we have five precincts. The precincts refer particularly to the voting section of that district.
That makes sense.
But we don't have wards.
Right. The thing too, that was, I'll just mention it, because I know it was a thing to me, is how independent the school committee is from us.
That's like separation church and state.
Yeah, it's very different. We.
No, it is.
We have, we appropriate them money.
That's it.
A percentage of it, actually a significant percentage of our budget, like sixty, seventy percent goes to education. But we give it to Dan, and then we never see it. And we, we have no say.
We used to give it to Dan.
Yeah.
Dan no longer has a.
But a lot of people that I've talked to that have been recently elected to the school committee do want to have a newer relationship with city council. They're trying to go back and forth. I know you've reached out to them before in the past, where everybody was thrilled because they were like, city council never even talked to us.
Yes.
So.
Joy, districts, before we move on, you know when the last time they were reviewed to?
Yes, a couple of years ago.
Cool. I think it, it has to do with the census.
Yep.
And there were some, there were some minor tweaks between us, but.
Yeah, because we, we finally met the sixteen thousand criteria, which officially put us into prevailing wage status now. So any bids or whatever that go out definitely have to be under prevailing wage, so that the labor has to set wages.
Okay. So we'll go through the city council rules pretty quickly, because obviously you have them. They're not, I don't think they're difficult to understand and as can all read. So, yeah, it talks about the, the responsibilities of the council president running the meeting. You know, I can, the president can vote on the subjects, dictates the agenda, dictates who can speak when.
He's on rule five A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And he's only saying half of the sentence.
I know, that's why, that's why I get this quoted so commonly, is why I just.
Yeah, I'm trying to think like your inside voice is maybe not your outside voice.
Yeah, I know.
The meetings are scheduled, but they're, they're basically the first and third Wednesday of every month, except for June, July, and August are the first, so.
Right.
So five A, they do mention briefly, there are regular city meetings, special meetings, which are if we have some kind of deadline that we need to call quickly outside, you know, there's a, there's a protocol for that as far as noticing. Executive sessions, they talk a little bit about, you go into after first comedian open session. And we know, we have, Barb gives me this thing you have to read citing why we're going to executive session. There has to be a vote. Again, the meeting schedule we talked about being the first and third Wednesday. Finally deadline, this is really good. We're talking a little bit, I know, because Jen and everyone mentioned that, well, how, you know, how do I even submit something, even if I had a great idea? So backing up, I guess, the way you submit something, there's just two main ways. One, any, any councillor can submit something to be looked at or addressed. So now that you're a councillor, if there's something that comes to you and says, you know, I think this is something we should look into, literally type it up, you know, and I usually, and you can make it sound nice, you know, dear city council, I would like to, you know, please submit this, blah, blah, blah.
I was going to print that out and it didn't make any sense to me because you couldn't add your own data to it. So I keep all of that in a Google document, so I can send you like a dot doc.
Okay.
Document and also make sure. But let me show you an example of it. I mean, this is what I use as just a, a template. Exactly. Because I'd asked Barbara for a template, but we didn't have any. And they can be as short or as long as you wish. I have one in desktop, but because it's done in. So I just have it under city council that I have. But if you look, it just has our seal and then everything on it. So this just has the date and it's to dear city council because you're presenting it to the best of city council. This one says, I would like to request that the public safety subcommittee add the Paul Street extension request for street acceptance back to the agenda. Because it was something I put towards back to planning board and I wanted to bring it back in.
Okay.
And then submitted. So that's really as simple as it can be.
Is Barbie talking on this, too?
Oh, she gets it. She gets it.
What I do. Oh, we just send it to her and she'll get it to us?
She puts it in the agenda.
In the packet, yes, she.
Right. So that, that's what we're talking about, is trying to get this stuff digitally. I always make it a PDF and send it to her. So that way a PDF can get forwarded to you email so that you know before you walk in the door that this stuff is happening. Gives you a little.
Can she take a PDF?
She can.
Although we did discuss this, that you can even be an email. It can be an email. I mean, you can always say, dear, you know, I would like to please add to the agenda. So it doesn't have.
So you see the.
I'm compulsive and file online. Yeah.
Right.
So.
Email's gone.
Yeah, exactly.
And the thing too is, you know, it's supposed to be, you should, if you want something for the meeting on a Wednesday, you should try to get it to Barb like that Thursday before, five days.
Yeah, it's a cut off this Thursday.
Now, you will always see, you'll walk in, there's like two or three more papers on your desk. And so things that come in late, like for instance, that second letter we had last night was late. I was like, no way am I waiting two weeks to address this one.
No.
This is being introduced tonight. So occasionally you'll see, it's a nice finance things coming in that we need as a time thing. So it's not written stone, but for the general routine things, you try to do that ahead of time. The agendas, are they already, the packets are ready Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Well, that's one thing. I mean, you guys are aware of the hours that city hall has, right, that we're not open Monday or Friday.
Because we're not open Friday.
So there are people in the office here, my understanding is until about seven PM on Thursday.
Something like that.
Something like five.
Everybody left, I think it's five o'clock on Thursday, six o'clock on Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, the later day.
But obviously with your key, you can try and.
Does she, does she email it to you?
We're working on that.
The agenda, no.
Right now, it's just.
I think I got it.
It's in your mailbox.
You did. The email, the agenda is now, the city council agenda is put up on the website now. And that is done by Barry, who is our solo IT guy. But that is part of the request that Joy and I put into rules of red, so that all of the city councils will receive the agenda and all the information, their packet via email electronically, so that you have a chance to kind of look at it, do any research you need to before you walk in. Because I honestly have been, you know, okay minutes for the past year, and I get them two seconds before I sit down, you know. So I saw some discrepancies in You know, so I saw some discrepancies in the minutes and I was like, this just doesn't work for me anymore, because I didn't even have a chance to read them, you know, so.
But they are available five days before the meeting.
They are available five days for the meeting, starting on Friday after Thursday.
So...
So it'll be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Tomorrow for yesterday, or...
No, no.
Five days before our next meeting.
Next meeting.
So don't come here next week, oh, actually, you do have to be here next week, it's finance.
Five days before the next meeting, she cuts off the agenda on Thursday.
So again, so, and there is other way people, like you'll sometimes get in a petition where, I can't remember the number of signatures, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred signature. So the citizens can put together a request to have something looked at and put together a petition, which that enough is enough to be introduced to the council.
And that's the naming of the boardwalk as an example?
Yes.
A petition brought by the city.
Yes.
Yeah, and what's, just as an aside, that's been since summer.
Yeah, we're looking, we need, I think we need, it's strictly written out, there need five people, three rather than the mayor, two by me, or vice versa. And I think so far we've had two or three things, who, who sent in their names. One person is from Southampton, as much as they believe it's necessarily appropriate for someone with a different tip, sound to be on it.
Oh, wait, to be on, you're, you're putting together a naming committee?
For the boardwalk for the naming.
Oh, so, so, I know I'm kind of erring this, so, so that particular line item, to name it after the former mayor, is now turning into, what are we gonna name it committee?
Always.
Yeah.
So, so we can't just say, okay, let's name it that, we have to say, we wanna name it something, so it's supposed to be...
Well, it's already named, I think it'll be renaming, I think it's, I don't know if it's officially, but everybody refers to the national on a... Boardwalk.
So, so there will be a committee put together to give it a name, one of the options is to name it after the former mayor.
There will be a committee to discuss.
But it could come up being...
The recommendation could be no.
Be vomit.
No, yeah, or for, or for instance, if Mike writes a letter and says, I appreciate the effort, but I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, okay.
I think that would be, that may be a recommendation in light of his letter, we don't...
So anything like that where citizens come forward and say, I think this needs to be green instead of blue, we have to open it up to everybody to say, or maybe it should be yellow, and let them, okay.
I mean, that's, sometimes, I mean, it happens twice usually. The public state, at the subcommittee level, the public can come in and say, I want it yellow. And then the subcommittee votes on it, moves it to full city council, and then if it is a, a public hearing type of thing, then the person comes back up again and says, I still think it should be yellow, and then there's the votes.
And the, the other petition we got was for the funding for the community center. And I wasn't sure that we had done that, because we were already talking about the community center funding and it was already being discussed by city council. So that petition had come in on top of it, so I think it just got folded into the discussion rather than addressed as a petition from the community, which I wasn't quite sure, I, I wasn't quite sure if that was correct or not, but...
My, my interpretation at the time was number one, because it was always, it was already discussed, so it's not like we would refer to committee to be discussed, because we were already discussing the funding of that. And then, as Jen knows, my one, there was one line that I, I don't see how we could accept it, because it said, we recommend you ignore the law. I don't know if we can pass that. But, so five E, order of business, you'll see, now, this is typically the way the meeting goes, we'll call Pledge of Allegiance, which is supposed to be allegiance, which is active, was just introduced two years ago. Approval of minutes, public comment, again, and this, you know, this, referring to your pub, this is when anyone from the public can go up and speak to anything they want to, except that what's on the public hearing. So if they, if, if we have a public hearing about that stop sign, someone can't come up and talk about the stop sign. You have to wait. The big thing that is really important to know and to understand, and for the public, and that's again why I, I mentioned it again before that letter last night, is the fact that we can't respond is not because we don't care, it's because we can't, because the public didn't know that someone was gonna talk about Confederate flag tonight. So, you know, someone said, well, man, if I had known that, I would have been there. So we have to say, thank you for the information, we can't, or sometimes we had situations where, I think it was Fort Hill, actually where that started. Someone came up and it was a public hearing, you know, I feel frustrated, because this isn't being addressed. We can't talk about it now, but you're just our councillor's councillor Hayes. So that's, sometimes, that's how it goes. Comment or request from councillor Hayes and probably Smith, from the communications from elected officials, boards, and committee, to give a little time for precinct, or even at large councillors, I mean, sometimes, you know, again, I look at those, do we have any more, do I have anything to say, do I have any more papers? I move right on, but to give some time for any precinct councillors, if they have a report they'd like to say. So I think that's where we'll expand that and take...
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking about that is that, like, you know, my precinct too, there's a lot of businesses that open, you know, and I'd like to be able to say, we're welcome, you know, so on, blah, 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 coming in. We've had, you know, High Street finally got paved, we're really excited about that. And that actually engages the city councillor with their district, so that, you know, they're kind of paying attention and contributing something to what's actually going on in the community. And I think it would just, you know, show that the city council is, is paying attention to what's going on. And to just, you know, just run down the line, help them be like, you know, do you have anything?
No, I think it's great, because number one, I think it's nice for serving the community to announce your business, but also then it becomes a responsibility for the councillors to be aware of what's going on.
And I, I think for me, as an at-large councillor, rather than having to figure out to that on my own, to have that, oh, this is coming down the pipeline, just be aware that I think that'll be a really good thing.
This just happened in two, or this just happened in one. Mayor communications at every meet, actually technically, every even subcommittee meeting should have a mayor communications as part of their agenda, although obviously probably finance is only one she is regularly at, but if it's a hot topic, she'll be at property, she'll be at appointments, she'll be at ordinance, whatever it may be. Then, council communications.
I'd like to go back for a minute.
Sure.
To go to correspondence, because I think that usually gets overlooked, but with the, with the email from last night is what I'm sure. So if we were to get an email from a resident and reply to it, would we have to put it in correspondence, just to clarify it?
Um, you know, actually Barb had just said to me that there was actually something I'll pass out too. There's very little, we haven't even talked about the meeting yet, but there's very little surprisingly on email stuff, even today. But a lot of the city clerks are really suggesting that any kind of email communication, either make it electronic or PDF or hard copy, to have on the record, just to make sure that... Because you have to remember that any, any kind of communications you have are, you know, are permanent and can be called upon at any time for you to cough up, which is another reason why I wanted to get back to just having that city email, because right now it's intermixed with my personal, and like, how am I gonna find some of these things sometimes, you know, so...
One of the habits I've gotten into, I mean, to go back to the Fort Hill, there was a lot of email communication with different residents, and they were meeting, and they were doing certain things, and they were writing letters. So, I mean, I just got into the habit of, of blind copying or, you know, forwarding to Joe, just so that it's like, I've got an extra set of eyes on, you know, everything that's going on. But you're, you're gonna get complaints, you know, if somebody's complaining about their neighbor, they're, they're not going to want their name posted publicly or by you, so, you know, if it's...
If it's one councillor and a resident, and it's just between the two of you that you're having that conversation...
Then I think it's up to you and that person to decide whether they want...
That's up to you whether or not you wanna release that or not. If it involves, like, the emails that we've gotten where they've CC'd all of us, that's public record.
Yeah.
When they, when they do more than two on an email, then that now becomes public record. But if it's just one-on-one, and you're just, you know, just trying to sort things out, you're asking them questions, like, well, I don't really understand what the issue is, can you further explain it to me so I can understand it? Why don't you pick up the phone and call me, we can have this discussion, you know, things like that. That, that doesn't become public record unless somebody really wants to push it, but...
I mean, I've gone out, because people are like...
Personal.
Pothole, you know, I just hit a pothole in Parsons, and I'll go out to Parsons, take a look at it, come back, and be like, yeah, that's totally a pothole.
I totally agree.
Yeah, it's a pothole. There's some monsters in there.
I get it.
So under nine, committee reports. So I say again, and under, on your agendas, you have all the committee reports, so like, this one rules of government relations, and then you'll have the chair, you don't have this, but this is an example, it's just like any kind of typical agenda. It's listed, and the chair isn't listed there, but the chair, I, the councillor knows of the chair, it'll say councillor Hayes or councillor Winnie or whatever, maybe.
One of the things that was good when councillor Smith and I started is that on the boards, they let us, you know, every now and then, like, do you wanna do this, where, because you'll have to sit in for somebody, so you can absolutely do the report from whatever committee that you're on, so it's sometimes easier when you...
I'll lock it up. Yeah, I'll lock it up.
It's, it's sometimes easier when you do it yourself rather than listing, you know, for yourself.
And Barbara's really good, if you have a motion coming up, she'll actually write you a script.
Yeah, if it's a complicated one, yeah.
Let me write that down, because you have to kind of like, okay, so we're gonna be changing Mass General Law 5.0245 to slash B, you know, and it'll all be written down, so. And then, so old business, what's the definition of that?
Like, business that just has, like, I think there, is there an example here of one, old business? Okay, yes, for instance, old business is the naming the boardwalk in honor of Tossing. So that, it was introduced to former committee, we don't have enough people yet to create the committee, so it's just kind of still sitting there waiting to go forward.
Now, that's good information, what you've got sent there, we don't have enough people to form a committee. Can we not say that during the meeting? Like, we just kind of fly over it?
Yeah.
And like, that one sentence would have helped me.
Yeah.
I would've been like, oh, I get it.
Yeah, why that's, right.
So, so instead of just jumping over it, can we just add that, the reason we're, that we're, this is old business, we haven't gotten to it yet, is because of the name.
Yeah, well, I, I do say, we're still accumulating names, I think I said, we're still accepting names, I think I, maybe get sixty miles an hour.
I can hear you.
So I'll, I'll probably slow it down.
Okay, then.
My ears may be attuned.
No, you're fresh. And then new business is where that, like, letter about something coming in. What we'll do is, we'll sometimes fold in new business into our committee reports, because you'll see that. And they'll be like, oh, there's a pothole situation. So it's part of my report for public safety, and I will also make a motion to move a request from so-and-so into the public safety subcommittee and just take care of it, undo that.
Okay.
A lot of times you'll see, actually, that like, Joy will ask me a lot of times, do you want me to do new business? Because it seems a little bit to me, a little crazy to have appointments, go through the whole meeting, go back to appointments just to say, can I move these five people? Now, sometimes, you know, it depends on where we are, usually in relation to when we have to open that public hearing.
Right.
Because if it's getting close, then I'll say, we'll come back to it. But if we have time or we're already past it, then I just prefer just getting all the appointments out of the way. So she'll do her report, and then she'll go to new business and say, and also I have these five appointments. So the new, the new business will literally be the pieces of paper that come with your agenda, besides your agenda. So it will say, it'll say appropriation, and then there'll be a, there'll be a piece of paper talking about appropriation. Five G, mayor communications, again, that's when the mayor gives, you know, basically whatever she wants to speak about. I think it's a great opportunity, if you have any questions to ask the mayor, it's a great opportunity to do that there. Our parliamentary guidelines, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and I know Tamara just made a photocopy of these nice little, you know, short ones, these are great, because Rob, if you ever, which I tried to do at one time, they're extensive, and there is all kinds of sub-things going on. We, it is pretty much, pretty basic, you know, we go with the motion, the second, we make, you know, make a motion to amend a motion. And then typically, not that you care right now, but if someone makes a motion to amend a motion, you address that amendment first. So if JP says, I want to amend it to yellow, we say, okay, we'll take a vote, is there a second? Okay, we'll take a vote, and who wants it yellow? Then, passes or fails, so it goes back.
It gets confusing and complicated when you start adding amendments.
But that is pretty much it, I mean, I think we're usually motion second and motion to amend, I mean, occasionally...
Motion and a second, and then a discuss, and then we make the second motion. You do get another opportunity to talk about something.
Yeah, but talk about the, the, right, so there will be that discussion in between those things. I'm trying to think of like, what are they called, you know, permanently things you can say. Occasionally, we've had someone call a question. So if someone thinks that this is going way too long discussion-wise, I just want to take a vote on it, you can call a question, and then that has, and I think they talk about, you know, parliamentary levels of like...
You have to vote on it.
Yeah, if someone calls a question, you can't, you have to, you have to do it. And it may fail, people say, no, I, you know, it doesn't, someone may say, no, I still want to hear the discussion, but maybe you'll say, yeah, I've had enough discussion too, let's move it, so. So I think knowing Robert's Rules are great, but don't feel like, oh my God, I know, need to know the subcommittee, or the sub amendment, or the sub amendment, because it is pretty in-depth.
Okay, and, you know, Sam Derby is gonna be the vice president of city council now, and maybe as we go along for the first few couple of meetings, we can make sure that we're kind of, you know, giving people time to like, understand and then react, you know? Because there are some that are very kind of routine for the most part, but...
Is it, from a protocol perspective, and I don't know if Dan feels this, but because of the speed at which everything is going, is it okay for any of us to go, can I, like, what's the...
What's the opposite of call?
What's the opposite of slow your roll or something, I don't know.
Right, so are you calling, I mean, like, if someone makes a motion, we're so attuned if it's someone's favor just to say second, now it almost becomes like who can say second first.
Right.
So I don't know how you can slow the, the motion to the second, because once the motion is made, I don't...
To make the motion, you can't even talk about the motion until it's seconded.
Right, so once it's seconded though, can you say what, I don't understand what this motion is for?
He could do a roll call vote, because there's been a couple of times where I've been like, I'm not sure, and it's like all those, and it's done.
Any councillor can call a roll call vote.
Yeah, but if we did roll call votes, that way...
What does that mean?
That means you ask each individual councillor what their vote is in order, like, pass, pass, pass. So it gives you time to actually respond, I mean, there's a lot of things that I'm marked on as a yes, and I haven't even said or moved anything, you know?
If you're talking about during the discussion?
Yeah, where are you looking for the time?
All I'm, all I'm asking is, is there an opportunity during all of this for an interjection of, I don't know, I don't understand what this motion is for, I don't understand what...
So then, then as, yeah, then the discussion, so someone makes a motion, I think the sky is yellow. I second it, you know, and so then there is discussion, I'll say councillor Winnie, you know, and she'll say, no, I think it's blue. You know, oh, councillor Hayes, raise your hand.
Okay.
And, and so then it becomes a discussion, and that's when you could say, you know, I think it's this.
Why are we talking about the sky?
Right, exactly, call the question. So that's when, that's when the discussion, but, you know, yeah, and we, you know, we've had some discussions go for quite a while, so... You, you can, as long as, if you have a question you think you need to have answered, don't feel like I can't.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but you could also be like, you know, councillor president, could, could you slow down, please?
Yeah, oh, please, yeah, I don't...
Honestly, you know, I mean...
Also, I'm gonna reenter it, once, once the question is put to the city council, and we're in, we're in deliberations on a question that's been made, or a motion's been made and seconded, no one outside the city councillors can add to that conversation. So if we're in the middle of a conversation, you think you need more information from somebody outside of either the chair of the committee or whatever, you can't get it unless, unless we...
You can absolutely get it, but we have to reset the other question.
You have to rescind the motion and rescind the second.
Well, the chair of the committee, you couldn't, because it's still part of that.
Yeah, usually, the chair usually has the answers.
But at no point are you, are you, you know, there's no like, point of no return, you can always come back. And you'll be like, I just don't like it, and you can blow the whole thing up.
And Jen is the perfect person to listen to, because from day one, she was the chair. She was just mumbling her way through this.
I totally did, remember telling you, I was like, don't correct me in front of everybody, I'm just learning. You were fine, lots of support.
I thought I even said, good job, I thought I even said...
I did say, you did say, but there were, there were a couple of times where it's like...
So Rule 6F, this is what I talk about reconsideration, so even after a vote had been taken, you can ask for a reconsider, basically a, a new vote, and let me see... Trying to think, does that need to be seconded, or can it just strictly happen?
What's that?
A vote to reconsider, a motion reconsider, oh, requires a majority vote.
Majority.
So, you know, so regardless of if you, there was a vote that went happened and you didn't like the way it went, or you thought you would have voted differently if you had more information, then you can ask for reconsideration.
So if, that doesn't make any sense.
No.
In part, in, in Robert's Rules, the motion to reconsider is made by one person, and I believe must get a second. And then the mo, the, the item goes to the next meeting, the next, the next meeting. There's no vote at the first meeting where the reconsideration took place, where there has to be a majority, because it doesn't make sense to have a majority vote on something and say, this is really to protect the minority's interests for reconsideration at a future meeting. So if there's a majority, a minority that says, okay, I, I'd like to have this reconsidered at the next meeting, and there's a second, all it would take is a majority at the first meeting to say, we're not gonna discuss this later?
No, you're right, your chances of getting stopped on that are pretty high.
Pretty high, so if it's really to protect the minority interests, I think we ought to refer back to Robert's Rules on this, which allow for one and two to go.
Well, I think it's even a charter, that, I think I just read the charter that we had, that as long as a person made a motion and it was seconded, it was enough.
At any meeting in which a vote has been taken, any councillor may move for immediate reconsideration or may serve notice that the motion for reconsideration shall take place at the next regular meeting of the council.
Serve notice.
The vote of reconsideration shall be open for debate, which shall be limited to twenty minutes. A motion to reconsider requires a majority vote. Reconsideration may be moved by any councillors regardless of how the councillor voted on the first vote.
That's, that's our rules.
I'd like to make a motion that we take a... I know, I'd like to take a motion that we put our Rule 6F reconsideration on a list to move to Rules and Regs Subcommittee.
Second.
To what?
Yeah, that was real. Oh, oh, I guess I'm the chair, all those in favor?
But wait, that's so wrong.
This is a perfect example.
It's a discussion.
I never could, I just finished my second. So I'm gonna make a motion that we have a list, a running list of stuff that we'd like to maybe move towards Rules and Regs to take a look to make sure that these, the city council manual and the city council rules are up to snuff. And the first item that I would like to put on this list for the Rules and Regs Subcommittee is the reconsideration, Rule 6F. Second.
So, so now there's a first, and now I should say, is there any discussion? Do you have something to say, councillor Smith?
No, I just, I just wanted Jen to finish her second.
Is that so bad?
I was looking for it in the charter.
Yeah, the charter is different.
Charter 86 says we should, it says we may review on every year that ends in zero and five, did that happen in 2015?
Yes, and we decided not to give ourselves a raise.
Yes.
No, 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 not about Saturday. The whole charter, the whole charter...
Are we trying to review?
I think the charter was due every zero.
I'm not looking for a raise, guys.
Really quickly, yeah. All right, you wouldn't get it your second day anyways.
I thought the charter reviews on years ending in zero.
At least once in every five years and every year ending in a zero or in a five, councillor may, so it's not shall, but provide a review of all ordinances of the city.
So we did it in zero, I remember.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
On point of order, point of order.
Yeah, exactly.
Point of order retains the motion, because if we're gonna review, if the whole thing needs reviewing anyway, then we need the motion for it.
Okay, that's a good one, we're, we're talking about the city council rules, and not the chair.
Right, the rules, not the charter, rules can be...
They're separate, separate issues.
Separate from the charter.
Rules you can change real, not really easily, but rules are something we can change...
They have to follow what's in the charter, they can't, they can't.
So we can abstain, you know, it's kind of like, kind of like Mass General Law doesn't trump federal law.
No, it's city, but it's like our constitution, it's like our, it's like our form of government.
So the charter always trumps whatever rules we might come up with. The charter is the bible, just like federal government trumps mass general law.
So we can't just decide every year to review the ordinances, because that is saying every year that ends in zero and five? At least zero and five.
But back to the motion on the table.
Right, there's, there technically is a motion table. So there was a motion to second to submit request to have the reconsideration, Rule 6F.
As part of a general review of rules of the council.
Right.
So we're, are we agreeing to an motion that we're going to say, let's open up all of the rules for review? And we've already found one that needs review? Or are we saying very specifically, let's go to this one?
See, mine, what I like to, I like to do it piece by piece, because if we wait to do the whole thing, 6F may never get addressed, or maybe a year before we get it addressed, so I like doing pieces, so at least you make sure 6F is done, and then if we find more, continue on, but...
That was kind of my intention with the minutes, I was like, I'm gonna kind of take a list of these kinds of things that are popping up, and that seems to be the first one, unless somebody found one that I missed.
Councillor Winn.
In page eight. In page eight of the parliamentary procedures at a glance, reconsider a hasty action, I move to reconsider the vote on blank. May you interrupt the speaker? Yes. Do you need a second? Yes. Is it debatable? Yes. Can it be amended? No. What is the vote that is needed? Majority. Can it be reconsidered? No.
Still think we need to review it.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, we may say.
That's what Robert's doing, so.
Right, but I know it's weird, I could've sworn I saw something in the charter.
Like in poker, I get to call, right? And we make a, that's what it comes from?
Yeah, maybe.
I'm gonna call.
So I don't, I don't think it would hurt to put this on the list and to review it, I'm certain it would be in favor.
Okay, okay, well, we have a motion and discussion, and so this is real life city council here. So.
You just made it sound like an MTV reality show.
Totally a dream.
Things start getting real.
Yeah.
It could be a long, dream, but it's all good.
Silence, putting off.
That's really like.
Sorry, sorry.
No, there's already more discussion. It's pretty much, so, okay, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you got that good.
Could you?
I think it was the, there you go, seven, zero? Sorry.
Could you have called, could, could you just give the example to us, so we can all hear it, if you wanted it to be a roll call?
Oh, yeah, then, then as we said, well, there's a first and a second emotion, there was discussion, and then I.
I could've said, roll call vote, please.
Yeah, I mean, even if I had said, you know.
Or he could've said, I want a roll call vote.
Even just then, so it's a way, I want a roll call.
So anybody can request.
And so, you'll see on some controversial issues.
Because you want it in the minutes who went with.
Yeah, exactly. Or just so, you know, or just, so there's not a confusion, was that four and five, or five and four, you know, so.
If you are not gonna vote on something, do you have to verbally say, I have seen?
Yeah.
Otherwise, Barb counts you as a yes, pretty much.
Okay.
Well, no, I think she would know that she hasn't, she's missing somebody.
Really?
She may or may not.
Oh, well, I mean, if it was, it was, it was a voice vote, no. Because a voice vote, she wouldn't notice, I didn't hear Peg say yay. She would, so, I think she's probably looking more for, how many nays do I hear, and where did they come from? You know, but obviously a roll call vote, she would be way down.
Okay, yeah, all right.
No, but that's what I was saying, like, when we, you know, to city council, maybe it would help to do like, roll call votes, so that you can see how everybody's doing things for a little while.
Okay, so actually, Rule 8A, that's what I talked a little about, the roll, roll call vote. Roll call may be requested by any councillor, shall be under the records, alphabetical, rotated after each year.
Can we vote?
Huh?
Not every year.
Oh, rotate, yeah, sorry, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Pass, yes, no, essentially a pass. Rejected measures, Rule 9. So this is kind of interesting, like, if you, if we vote on something and we vote it down, we cannot address it again for six months. So sometimes you'll see us ask to have something removed without prejudice, which is basically saying, we're not gonna vote on it now, but, you know, maybe it will come back, I mean. Because it, once you vote on something, if it's a no, then you really can't, you're not supposed to address it again for six months. So some, if there's a situation where it may be coming back, then someone would just remove it instead of voting on it. Rule 11, council committees, we talk about the different committees, we're gonna add, we're going to expand the definitions. Ad hoc committees, example would be the pond naming, Rule 11A, committee parameters, and. So there's mail, again, a lot of this is somewhat redundant and going over again. Talks a little bit about the rules in 11E, the rules of government relations. Again, I know I'm going through these quickly, but so much of this is self-explanatory, and we're, we're going on an hour and a half, so I don't want to keep it busy here forever, so.
So there's the planning stuff that went through.
Yeah, I don't see.
Is there, how come there's only two listed?
Because.
Public safety and Rules and Government Committee.
You know what, we should make a motion, you should make a motion, that the Rules and Regs Committee reach out to the subcommittees to do some sort of definition, scope of work, mission statement.
Okay, so. Now, no, you could do, so you could, you can say. So move, yeah, so if someone says, sometimes, sometimes you can see how that's saying, you get so moved. So basically, you're kind of grabbing what that person's saying, making it a motion.
Okay, so move.
And then there's a question.
It's cheating.
Are you saying something?
No.
No, but you said it so eloquent, but I couldn't have said it better.
So then I'll second it. Now there's discussion?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say that the reason why that probably wasn't put in there was because the original charter, the rule, I was, I've been here since the beginning, unfortunately. Unfortunately, whichever.
What do you mean?
Whichever, whichever, since the beginning. God, going on 21, anyways. When we initially did the rules, in fact, I probably have them at home, the original rules, it was maybe five pages. And at that time, in, in the charter, it listed the subcommittees of the city council. Since that time, going forward twenty years, we've added.
Did I say that?
There is some.
New subcommittees, we have added new subcommittees to the, to this working document, because they were needed.
Thanks for dinner. So that, but that is, but that does require, I mean, that would speak to the fact that this could be updated. Since this is our main document, the fact that they're not there.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that they shouldn't be there, they should be there. The why is history.
I mean, sugar.
So, anyway, I guess, please, if you read, you know, especially City Council rules.
Are we gonna vote on that?
Oh, right. So any more discussion? So Jen, you're gonna make, you're gonna make written copies to give our, of these two motions? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Motion passes. There you go. So, again, any of these, especially, especially the rules, read through, if you have any questions, feel free to ask any of us.
Where are you?
I just finished. I have the glossary of terms, so I figured. Do you want to, someone else want to gloss your terms?
Sure.
Who you do glossary?
I can do glossary of terms, because I need to put some caveats in some of these. What, this, the reason I want to be a little cautious with this, some of these are just my own personal interpretations. Some of them, I actually looked up, so for example, affordable housing, I went right to the, you know, the housing authority, seeing what, what we have actually in writing already on the webpage, making sure that our definitions are similar. So affordable housing, we hear a lot about affordable housing on the city council. It's something that is a contentious issue for a lot of residents, about whether or not we need to have affordable housing, and how much affordable housing, there are actual rules and everything, but if, I just wanted you to know, what do we actually mean by affordable housing? Well, families with income less than eighty percent of the median income, for the Springfield-Chickapee-Hollyoke statistical, standard metropolitan statistical area, which is just how they look at the number of people, and they, well, it doesn't matter. But if you ever want to talk about that from a demographic standpoint, I can show it to you better. But for the affordable housing issues, this has come up a lot on the last, last term, because we had Parsons Village, and we also had Cottage, what would that be called, Cottage Street Apartments?
Mm-hmm, that's exactly what it's called.
And those are both affordable housing. So there is considerable feedback from particularly the new city residents about how they felt about having affordable housing coming into the neighborhood. So, these are the types of things that when suddenly you hear affordable housing going back and forth, as a city council, you want to make sure that if someone comes to you on the fly and just says, so what is affordable housing, you have a ready definition.
Okay.
So the definition would apply both to the purchase of real estate and to the rental, the leasing of real estate. So, as applications for both. Essentially, what we're doing is counting affordable housing, expanding the definition, sorry. We're counting the number of units. There's a state law that says that communities have to have ten percent of affordable housing, or the zoning that the community has in place cannot be used to stop an affordable project from coming into the community and only applying to the rules of bulk size, height, and not various neighborhood definitions of what, a single family, or two family, or a four family, you can dump a whole bunch of units in that location, unless you have ten percent affordable housing. And so you have to go by the definition of what affordable housing is, in order to be able to qualify, or not qualify. I think right now, we're between six and seven percent. North Hampton is at twelve and thirteen percent. And they don't think they have enough affordable housing.
And wasn't that a?
Just, sorry, didn't mean to.
No, that's great.
No, but I thought that was a good example of treehouse, from what I, from what I understand, we're under that ten percent. So, the state came in and said, this is where we're going to put it.
The developer, the developer.
The developer said that's where they're gonna put it.
And they were backed up by the Department of Housing Development, an arm of the state.
And it didn't even matter what we had for zonings. And they can assert all of our zoning, they can assert all of it.
That's state law, it's called, chapter forty B.
Most, most of the zoning, there are some.
AKA, the anti-snub law.
Yes, if you hear chapter, if you hear chapter forty B, that's referring to is that law that allows a developer who's putting in a percentage of affordable housing to skirt a lot of zoning laws, which.
So if we have it zoned commercial, as an example, they could come in and say, oh no, we're gonna make it residential.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep, as long as we're below the ten percent, yes.
It's more, more concerning is when they say, see that nice field? We want that. That's where it becomes more concerning than a, a commercial spot, you know?
And we want to put sixty units there.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
But wait a minute, that really doesn't fit our master plan.
I just made it for myself to maybe invite the city planner to one of our meetings, and to explain what projects are currently happening in East Hampton, and what projects we have on the radar for East Hampton that are coming up, and what the planning department's goals are for the next two years, because complying with this forty B is definitely a top priority. And one of the things that I try to do is take a look at their agenda, they're, you can kind of get an idea what the planning board is doing. But that's really where a lot of these things start, and, and knowing what the planning board is doing early in the game, because sometimes by the time it gets to city council, you know, you can't say, my neighborhood thinks this is a bad idea. It's like, well, they should have been at the planning board meeting. So, it's really imperative to go to the smaller meetings, if you want input.
You're just to say affordable housing is an important issue in the glossary of terms.
It's a good one to start with, yeah.
And I know that this is certainly not an exhaustive list, these were just some of the, the ones that we were thinking of.
Thank you for putting them on.
Well, there were a lot of things, when, when Smith and I started talking about this, where it was like, you just heard this term, and everybody just started talking about it. It was like, I have no idea what you're talking about. I have no idea who that person is at the podium. Like, you know, sometimes people just come and speak in front of city council, and I would have to go over and be like, who is that?
Don't we make them, don't we ask them to introduce themselves?
Not every time. I mean, it's weird, you don't notice when you know who it is.
Yeah.
But if you don't know who it is, like, a lot of times, city department heads, not introduced.
I say, the time I noticed your head spitting around was when the woman who was filling in for our assessor, who was a temporary fill, and she came up, who, she came up to, to say why it was important we act on picking that assessor sooner than later, because we had tax base reform. I remember you were like, who's this person?
Yeah.
Because it was a letter, I think a letter came with it too, when she went up and spoke to the letter, but, yeah. Um, yes.
Just wanted to give you a definition and a title of all the city parks. I have a lot of parents come to me to talk about the different parks. They want to know, they want to know, for example, when the Nanatac Park is, was gonna be open, it was closed for a very long time, and there were people still trying to play on the structures, although it was closed. So you'll get a lot of calls like that, and it's just nice to know the park. So, that's definitely also worth a, a drive-by at least, just so you can see the different ones.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions about the park, you just call Park and Rec Department. Because they're fully in charge of all of the parks. And they're also fully in charge of the cemeteries, and the maintenance of, and the burials, and all of that.
So, the conservation commission, that is the body that oversees the Wetlands Protection Act. In, in East Hampton, that usually comes up with North Hampton Road, the road that leads from East Hampton to North Hampton. There is a lot of wetland protection on there, and very often, a big controversy of having anything being built on that land is the wetlands protection, so, that's the commission. So, we have a cultural district designation for Cottage Street, and this is, this is relatively recent. But the state has a special tourism program and grants availability, so they opened it up. It's a competitive process, you have to apply to be considered a cultural district, and we applied for Cottage Street to be one. And now that we have that, and it goes from meaning to the boardwalk, now that we have that designation with the state, that opens up East Hampton for a number of grants that we were not eligible for prior to the cultural district designation. And with that cultural desti, cultural district designation is when we started to see a lot more branding of the, particularly of Cottage Street, of being a destination. That's when we started to see cultural chaos come in. All of that is part of that cultural district.
Okay. A lot of the public art that's been funded by that.
Cottage Street Studios, the reason I wanted to make sure we have this is that this looks like a little, little brick house from the outside, as you go and by the button building, and then around the curve. But inside, if you haven't been there, there are, I think they said at least sixty. Yeah, there are so many different artists.
Those are, this is it.
Yeah, Joe.
Go, Bill, so.
So it's, it, it's really one of the gems of the city, that if, if you ever hear people say that East Hampton is an artist's colony, things that really is part of that definition of an artist's colony.
Did you put paragon in there?
Not yet, I don't think I did.
Paragon's part of that too.
Yeah, exactly.
More.
Does anyone need a review of CPA funds? Don't know how familiar or unfamiliar you are with those.
All right. I mean, the main thing, we've had several councillors, who, whether it is an appropriation, why can't we use that money? So it's, there's those four things.
I just wanted to, because it hasn't come up yet, normally it has already come up by this time, is a snow emergency. You, you will eventually, it could, it could be in two weeks, it could be in three weeks, it could be one good major storm, it'll just wipe us right out. In the budget, we set aside money for snow removal. If we increase that line item in the budget, we will have to increase it for the life of that budget. We can never decrease that line item.
So next year, it's gotta be whatever that is.
Right, we can never decrease that line item. So, for years and years and years, that line item really has never been increased.
It's always been increased, but very minimal amount.
Minimum, 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 minimal amount, because.
Five hundred dollars.
Because once you, once you increase it, that's where it stays.
Why?
If it goes from a hundred thousand.
I'm curious.
Because if, if you, if you put the money in there, and you have a really mild winter, you, you can't access that money until free cash is certified till the end of the year, which could potentially put us into a really good bind. So they, they keep that line item usually minimally fed. That's when we go into.
Oh, I see, because, because you can't use the money elsewhere, if you don't use it on the street.
You cannot, you cannot use it.
Whereas you can always deficit spend for snow removal, snow emergencies.
For snow removal. Right. So. So you will see that we will, yeah.
Future.
Yeah, so you will see that eventually, we will get to the point where it will come to the city council, and that does not go down to finance or anything, it's, it's voted right then and there. Once they declare the snow emergency and it comes to us, then we start to deficit spend off of next year's free cash.
Okay.
Now JP, and as I remember from finance, you saw, they will have to sign those receipts, right?
Yeah, you always sign the receipts.
Two out of three members of the finance committee have always been there to sign the receipts.
Will get the bills, and you have to sign the receipts of the bills.
I certainly, and feel free to ask any questions about signing the receipts. I think it's an important thing to do, to look for the further details, regardless of signing of the receipts.
Absolutely.
Don't just necessarily look at what's presented to you, look at the supporting. of the receipts. Don't just necessarily look at what's presented to you, look at the supporting-
When you say receipts, does that, does that mean vendors we may use?
The bills.
Sure.
Beyond just what we have in terms of street plowing.
Anything that has to do with snow plowing, once we get into deficits, we're gonna start signing on.
And these are usually private vendors, these are private vendors, right?
And also public employees.
Mm-hmm, public employees, overtime.
The overtime for the public employees, and-
Any equipment bought having to do with snow removal.
And any money spent for food for the employees.
Right, if they're working fourteen, fifteen hour shift.
If they're working, they get, there's a six dollars for this, and three dollars for this, and, you know, it probably wouldn't hurt at some point to put all that data up on the website, at some point. I mean, we're being open about what's being spent, what it takes to plow the city. That's part of what it takes.
It's expensive.
And it's very attractive.
What was that mentioned? What on the website? Because I'm keeping the list of what we should put on the website.
What I'm saying, probably wouldn't hurt to put some of those finance bills that you sign for, for the snow emergencies.
Well, they're gonna put it all into an Excel sheet anyways, so I mean-
It's on an Excel sheet, well.
So that would, not necessarily the bills themselves, but, but, you know, the appropriation, you know, to the line item. Say, you know, you get a bill for an equip, piece of equipment that goes to a truck or something, and that's gonna come from like either GNS or somewhere, whoever the vendor is. I mean, that all goes into an Excel sheet that, you know, X amount of money was paid to, you know, X vendor for a piece of-
While the state legislation-
During the school emergen- emergency.
Well, the state legislation is looking at the public record law, and everybody's getting tested on that. There's a program that's used called Open Checkbook, which does exactly what you're saying, and exactly what you're saying. And I think that's something that our city should take a look at, to be able to have an open checkbook.
I think it's a, I mean, a good idea, because it makes it very public and open.
That's fine, you know, but are we there yet? So, you know, it's okay for good ideas, but are we there yet?
Well, let's not debate that right now, since we're on this. East Hampton City Arts Plus is-
Skip debt exclusion, did you want to?
Oh, I didn't mean to. So the debt exclusion, I'm not really a finance person.
I get, I get, so there are two things you may hear about finance. One is an override, which people talk about, about, you know, which has a permanent increase in our tax rate, so you bump it up, and then you keep on adding two and a half percent onto it. A debt override tends to be for a specific project, like a new school.
Debt exclusion.
De exclusion, I'm sorry.
Non-override.
Debt override.
No, 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 don't say debt override.
An override, an override is a permanent?
Right, I just merged my-
An exclusion is for a specific project.
And for a specific, and for a specific period of time, too.
And a specific period of time for a specific-
The override is a permanent change in the tax rate.
So some examples of debt exclusions that East Hampton has had, have been for the new high school.
Yep.
Public safety complex.
Yeah, the public, that was before, it was the public safety complex. And then if we end up having a new elementary school, and we need to finance that, that would also be a debt exclusion.
And once it's paid for, it goes away.
Yes.
Right.
And you have a specific time, like maybe five years or whatever?
Just like a mortgage.
Twenty years, you're like a mortgage.
Just like a mortgage.
But that's an important part of the schools right now, is that we're, we're not very far into a twenty-year debt exclusion, and now we're talking about another school, and for several, you know, taxpayers, they're like, that's too many.
It's gonna be very difficult.
So then you have to look at what's coming off the debt exclusion, from previous history, what's happened at the sewer and wa, at the sewer, sewage plant, what happened-
But the sewer and sewage plant usually, that's-
That's a separate, let me use an example, the public safety complex will be coming off shortly. And so that's something to be aware of, as you consider what's best for the city.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no, but that opens up the door now for the sewer and water.
You opened up, yeah, yeah.
So you might as well just explain that, the sewer and water enterprise funds.
There's an enterprise fund, sewer and water departments, where the fund is set up separate from the city funds. They raise their own revenue, so you have your own water rate, your own sewage rate.
And that's the Board of Public Works, which is autonomous for us.
The Board of Public Works, and it is autonomous, and those funds are separate from the city government funds. We still have to approve supplemental appropriations from those funds, et cetera, and any borrowing against those funds. But it's separate from actual city-raised funds, like from property tax, from excise tax on vehicles, et cetera.
So that's, that's, that's that separate bill we get, as-
Yes, that's your water and sewer bills.
That's your water and sewer bill, separate.
That goes to them.
So those monies would be used for the infrastructure for the water and sewer.
Right.
And to speak to that-
Separate from our tax.
Just briefly, we have a, I'm sorry.
And to speak to that-
Let me finish, please. You, I interrupted you before, don't interrupt me. We have before us a million-dollar study of our infrastructure that we approved. So that's being evaluated by Ty and Bond and other engineering groups, which we should keep an eye on, because infrastructure is a big issue. Hopefully it'll help us to be able to determine what our needs will be over the next seven years.
In terms of the pipes and the flowage.
Pipes, the flowage.
Age of the pipes.
Yeah.
The deterioration, age isn't necessarily the-
Deterioration, right.
The fact that this, this pipe from this era deteriorated faster than the pipe from this era.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the studying of that, and hopefully we'll have a good handle, and it'll make us eligible for state and federal funding.
Yep.
And we all need to coordinate that. So it's, we're really converging from our glossary, aren't we?
They, they actually spoke at a planning meeting that I think Dan and I were at, where they talked about some of this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, and also, are the, this, no, that's quite all right, I didn't forget. Legislatively, because that's my kind of, I like state legislation, the wastewater treatment plants, they're bumping up their criteria in a lot of communities. They're gonna be in a lot of trouble, because we're gonna have to rebuild wastewater treatment.
And ours is in pretty good shape, because we, we have-
But these regulations are not as proud of compliance.
Stormwater regulations.
We have been moving forward with a lot of, a lot of that preemptively, so I think we're gonna be in okay shape, I mean, when it, when it comes down to that, so.
I don't, I don't think so. Not from what I've seen. I mean, I hope so, I really do. But I know Northampton's in the world.
Yeah, the word out of Northampton, the word comes to that.
Yeah, the stormwater management standards are gonna knock us out of compliance. And now back to you.
I'm not as confident.
So ECA plus is funded through the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and that's where we get Burns Maxey. That's where her salary comes from.
Okay.
And the East Hampton City Arts Plus, the reason they changed it to plus is that they went from really considering visual arts as arts and trying to expand it to literary arts, to sound arts, to, much more encompassing. And the Grants Committee are just simply the committee of people who, who are, who do the funding.
I, I would also add that, that also incorporates on Southampton and West Hampton, we bowl them in, so that's a little bit why it's plus as well, okay?
Oh, yeah.
So does she work on behalf of them as well? There's, I think it's more, there's people in West Hampton and Southampton kinda help out in the East Hampton group. But yeah, we, we do kind of encompass, that's why it's East Hampton, ECA plus as well.
Okay. And then the East Hampton Council on Aging is in the-
Old post office.
Yeah, old post office. A lot of people think that's the only thing that they do, but Council on Aging is really part of a multi-layered network that goes down to the city, city level, but there's also federal and state levels when it comes to councils on aging. And in Massachusetts, a person who lives in any, anywhere within the state, if you had a concern about an elderly person, if you go to the Massachusetts website for elder care, it will give you a one-eight-hundred number. So they will, they will start to put people into contact with the East Hampton Council on Aging as point person from that initial contact, call it, oh, it sounds like you might wanna talk to the East Hampton Council on Aging. They also do a lot of outreach with seniors in the community. When I first moved to East Hampton in two thousand and seven, we had the highest proportion of people over the age of ninety-five anywhere in the country. So I don't, I think most of them have died by now, so I doubt we still have that distinction. But a big part of that is keeping them in the community, and the Council on Aging really has a number of, of programs that are supposed to aid the older person in doing that, right?
They also, they also have a very, very large volunteer system with them that do programs within the Council on Aging, but not necessarily part of the Council on Aging. Like your friends, I think it's the Friends of, the Friends of the Council, which is huge, because they, they raise a lot of money, and they do a lot of awareness. They've raised a lot of money for the vans, they, they're very active, very, yeah, so, good group down there. Introduce yourself to them and tell them, just say hi to them.
Oh, I, we had a very lengthy meeting, about a month and a half ago.
There's the executive session, we've already discussed that, first reading, so they didn't have the definition when this went to print, but I'll fix that. The fish ladder is not as common, we talked about now, but when I first came into East Hampton, and up through years, I would always hear about the fish ladder. So this is taken directly from the newspaper, but just as a really, it was a pretty big project that was, had a lot of problems with the funding and a lot of unanticipated delays. One of the remaining controversies over the fish ladder that I see today, just based on the press, is that the general public is not able to actually watch the fish ladder in action. And when it was being proposed, and when it was being built, that was a really big draw for a lot of people, that they would be able to actually see the fish ladder in action.
Where is it?
It's right on North Hampton Street.
At the man here.
We have, we have a right-of-way in there that's supposed to be open to public, and we, when we did the easement, we put in par, public parking spots back there that, that the city still owns.
But you can't see it?
We had at least four parking spots.
So there's a, it's called the-
Room for picnic tables.
That's Memorial Bridge on North Hampton Street, where they put in that new traffic lane, and on the right-hand side, it's used for the beer shop. So if you look down, there's an older brick building, and that was a very old well for East Hampton, and that was a publicly owned building. It's since gone through a couple of different owners, but it is that dam that has the fish ladder.
It was, it was originally, there was a power station, it was a water well, water wheel there, originally.
Curiously, there's a ton of funding in Massachusetts to take dams down now.
Well, that was mentioned, but-
This dam is still in pretty good shape right now, and-
I'm super lucky.
Has a fish ladder, which costs a million dollars to build.
Every day, I have alerts, I read what happens on the hill.
And while we're talking about it, East Hampton has a, has a study that was done around nineteen eighty-six, where there was gonna be hydro power at that-
We did discuss that, yes we did.
Just to bring that to everyone's attention. That can certainly come up again.
Yep.
As, as we move-
We did discuss that, yeah.
To discuss a variety of other issues regarding power.
Yep.
And this would be actually, example of the property committee, because I believe on that property committee, as part of the purchase, we retain the right to use it again for electricity. At the time, the technology as it is now, it is not efficient, it isn't cost-effective, but if it becomes cost-effective, then we retain the right to reuse it as well.
Yes, we did, yeah.
I get a lot of calls, and a lot of those people are just kidding me about, yeah, our, they ask me about the green community designation, they ask, why can't we use our, our dams more efficiently?
Well, we only have one dam, and it's like-
But from the, it's not like these are questions that I feel, and you can say that, but, but that's out of the realm of my insurance, so.
I'm certainly happy to talk with anybody interested in hydro power.
And this dam down here is not ours, that is owned by that building, Cottage Street.
Right.
That's a private.
Right. And we don't own Perfume Pond, oh, I'm sorry, Lower Mill Pond.
One Ferry Street actually owns the other side of it, because I, I looked into trying to get that footbridge back. But the city owns one side of the pond, and one Ferry Street.
Yeah, and we don't ever wanna own that pond.
So the, we have a, we also have a green community designation, and we started, we, we were first awarded this in two thousand and ten. And I am still not comfortable with the level of information I've received regarding what this means for us. I know, from the planning department, it opens the planning department up to a lot of different, different grants than otherwise would be available. But in terms of the decisions that we make as a council, one of the, I know everyone can have their personal, personal opinions about a lot of different, for example, whether or not the environment is important to you. When this came to me, one of the concerns I had was with all of these big vehicles that were buying through the police, you know, the, the line saying, we need all these really new vehicles, and we're going to be replacing all of our cars with the, the larger vehicles, whether or not that would-
Disqualify us?
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to know the answer to that, it was very-
So basically, the question is saying whether or not we're still compliant with being a green community designation?
Right. And I don't know the answer to that, if at current, currently, whether or not we still have the green community designation.
What did we need to get that designation? Like, what is green about the community?
I wasn't on the board, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What, what did we have to do to get our designation as a green community?
I don't think we did.
I know, we had to change at least some of our building code, insulation.
Couple ordinances, insulation.
What are the five criteria?
I don't know, that's why I gave the-
That would be in, that would be the health, health department?
Planning, how about just-
Building department would know green building codes, and stretch codes that had to go into, into effect.
Yeah, for the building, but, I mean, the green community standard, I don't-
Yeah, the planning department is the one.
Probably the planning.
We did LEDs in our street lamps.
Yeah, we did.
We put microbiotic worms in our-
And we do own the street lamps, by the way.
We got worms.
I get it, the one thing I noticed, this is a very dark town. Like, the lights are not, there's not, it's not very well lit.
We own them.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's not well-
No, we own the LEDs. LEDs only light down, they don't light like, streetlights used to. They light down, so.
All right, so here's the five criteria. Provide as-of-right sitting in designated locations for renewable alternative energy generators and research and development or manufacturing facilities.
And we did that with our solar.
Adopt an expedited application of a permanent process for as-of-right energy facilities, establish an energy use baseline, and develop a plan to reduce energy use by twenty percent within five years. Let's see if we did that.
Yeah.
Purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles. Buy set requirements to minimize lifecycle energy costs for new construction. One way to meet these requirements is adopt a new board of building regulations and standards.
And that's where the rub is, because the purpose is to be able to move in the snow and get-
It might not be energy efficient in-
Right, and maybe it happens at a subcommittee level, but we never get an estimate of a fuel-efficient vehicle versus an estimate to a non-flex-fuel vehicle. We never, ever, ever see it.
Well, you're only gonna use certain vehicles for certain purposes.
Right, but we should at least-
You're not gonna get a fuel-efficient fire truck or something like that.
Yeah, maybe the new technology.
No, there's definitely like flex-fuel pickup trucks and stuff like that, and we never, never see an estimate for those.
I'm not gonna-
We could certainly push for that. Yeah, or you can-
Yeah, my assumption is that's happening at the subcommittee.
Don't we already have an ordinance about-
We have an ordinance.
But it rarely, you know-
No, we ask every time. I mean, we've been asking for two years, I've never seen one.
Seen what?
The comparison.
The comparison between, we're, we're choosing the non-flex-fuel vehicle.
We're also choosing vehicles that are on the state bid list, which have already been out and bidded, and if you wanna go out and bid for those vehicles, you're probably gonna increase the price, from my own experience with buses. I buy buses from the city.
Yeah, I just wanna see the right, I just wanna see like, okay, so we've increased the price, so you're, right, that is a twenty percent, and we can't do that right now. So I just wanna see it.
I can go out to bid for propane, or something, or electric, or something like that, and increase the price by fifty to sixty percent.
I agree, I mean, I think if it's not something that we'd want, you always have to see it. I mean, you should always have that right to see the difference, even if it's out of the ballpark.
Yeah.
You really should force them to do that due diligence.
You don't have to ask, and you can ask for it.
It actually comes under finance.
Exactly, but anyway.
I don't know if I've seen the documentation, but I mean, typically Bruce will say, you know, we compared them, and, you know, this vehicle, whether, I mean, they, in my mind, they tend to have good rationale for why they chose the vehicle they did.
Right.
But again, I, I don't know if I've seen, this is the same vehicle price-wise, you know, as a comparison. And I think, as, I was talking to, and I don't know if it's DPW or Public Safety, one of those areas- one of those areas is excluded from that in the green communities, because they realize it would be hard to do it at all.
That would be the diesels.
Yeah. Well, I made a note to make sure that, you know, green community designation, are we still compliant?
Yes.
So that's what I, I put in the minutes, does that go with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Charter school.
Oh, the Hilltown. Dan, I, I wanna make sure I'm not misquoting the price, but every time we have a student go to the Hilltown charter, we have to pay them ten thousand dollars.
Any charter school.
That's, that's so important, it keeps our students in our schools.
It's the same amount, is it five thousand for school choice? Ten for charter, and five for school choice, correct?
And, it used to be that the Hilltown charter school was not in East Hampton.
Correct.
Just moved into East Hampton, so all of a sudden, part of their community compact plan is that they're going to open up X number of spaces for the city residents. So, all of a sudden, just because they bought something in East Hampton, our school district had to pay two hundred thousand dollars to the charter school because of the number of students that wanted to go there.
Well, we don't literally pay it, but it's taken off the cherry sheets, it's taken off of our assessments.
Yeah, and it's-
We don't have it to spend.
No.
So, it, it, I'm not bringing to debate whether or not we should have the charter school here, but you do need to know that part of the argument when people are, are getting very riled up about charter schools, this is why.
That is also gonna be a giant legislative issue, because Governor Baker has asked to take the cap off, so.
But, Dan, I have a question for you, maybe no, 'cause if this cap is on right now, how did the Hilltown charter come in?
Do you know that?
They, they got permission-
Because they were here already.
They were here already?
Oh, with, like, the cap relates to the number of charter schools in state.
Right.
Not the patient of an existing charter school, which is already part of the number.
They were in Haytonville. They were existing in Haytonville, and they got a lease here in East Hampton.
That's why Baker's the lead on it, 'cause it's state law.
Oh, I didn't even realize they could still do this.
Yeah, you're still doing that, yeah.
I think they will still, even though they want, are they opening new seats? Or are they opening existing seats they don't have filled? I don't, I don't know if they can increase their charter without state legislation.
You type it in.
Yeah.
There's only a number of schools.
It's on the number of schools, it doesn't matter how many students that they ca- oh. So if they have the space, they can do it.
Which is why they moved into a bigger space.
I'm gonna skip over into the departmental plans first.
We really need to look.
You want to go on it?
Look much more closely at the charter and trace for funding formulas.
Yeah, that's, that's a much bigger discussion.
All I'm saying is-
I know, I was like, man, I'm kind of intrigued, but I'm also ignorantly, blissfully ignorant.
This, this, this has the potential with what Governor Baker's proposal can affect, will affect, will affect everything. Every public school across the entire state.
So that means that, um, we could have ten schools built here. Yeah.
But they won't, um, yeah. Okay, so, um-
It doesn't even tie to our school choice, but that's a whole-
Yeah, however.
The master, the master plan, if you haven't read it yet, it was a document that was created in two thousand and six.
I was on the master plan committee.
So, it's, it's great work. I found it really helpful to see some of the names of the people who were, um, on that, ju- just to become familiar with people who have been involved in the city for a long time. So, it wa- it was helpful from that perspective, and helped me place some people when they would come up during public speak time, like, why do you haven't, you know, that was, it's just good to know.
Yeah, there's some disproportionate influence.
And again, the, the master plan is nine years old at this point, so a lot of people will say that this is outdated, we should no longer use it, and other people are saying this is the, this is the only document that we have that is based on the community's input, so that-
There's a lot of meetings.
Mm-hmm. The Oliver Street landfill and solar project was, the city doesn't own the actual solar project, but the city rents out the landfill to a solar company that we then get the, the reinforcement from. So, the actual place where the solar project is located is in the Oliver Street landfill. I've never been able to find it, I have gone up there so many times.
I'll take you out there. Would you like me to take you down there?
You can come right by the door.
Somebody!
Try by my house.
I ended up at the Apple Orchard.
It's cool, it's beautiful.
No, you're in the wrong place if you're going to the Apple Orchard.
A small shout-out to the assessors department, because the way that they structured this deal, because solar panels have a degradation to them, is that they have it tied in to the degradation of the solar panels, and of the equipment.
Yep.
I, every other community is structuring their deal the way that they did.
It can be refreshed, in other words, we can get the equipment.
Yeah, it's really, really well done, and also, I think we got a lot of the equipment free because we were used as a, as a example for the company that was doing these kind of things. There's nothing but win all over this solar project.
We were a mo- the model.
So, do we get exclusive use of the electricity out of this, or can they, this company sell it to others, and that's why?
They do sell it.
They do sell it, we get, we get a-
We get a proportion of it.
Okay.
It's about eighty thousand dollars a year.
Oh, that's great.
That we used to offset our electric bills.
Well, then that's what I mean, is the way the deal is structured, the way that we sell it to them, and the way that-
We could buy all of the solar equipment, that is also in the agreement, but, no.
Probably outdated.
Um, yeah, well, it does, it's outdated right now, they're still making some advances.
That solar array is something that East Hampton should really be, they're super, super proud of, I mean, that was, and, and that was Mayor Mike Clausen, that was-
That was a win.
That's a great, great thing.
We did try to put-
And he will talk to you for hours about that if you want.
We did try to put the second solar unit on the other landfill, but we got too much pushback from the neighbors up on Love, Loveville?
Yes.
Road, and, um, but that was still never really taken out of the mix, we could potentially-
Well, I think it's wide open to be able to put any lamp, any, any, any solar array anywhere in the city. That option is still open to us, so it's not just any particular site, but anywhere, um, that may make sense. So I think, as part of our energy package, we need to keep, you know, very much aware of that.
Um, yeah, so, since I've never been able to locate it, I could have loved it.
I'll take you out there for a ride.
I'm not sure to realize this.
Let me know, I'll take you right out there.
I, I was like, there it is!
Dawn.
You gotta get out, you gotta get out of the plane.
Walk the dogs by very frequently.
Petition to council, I know we've already gone over that, um-
I remember before you jumped to that one.
It's either a hundred voters, or a city councillor putting something forward. Proposition two and a half override, we know we've already gone over that a bit. For the history of East Hampton, we did have an unsuccessful proposition two and a half override back, I think, in two thousand and twelve, um, for schools. Public speak time, we've gone over. Reserve fund, I-
It's our rainy day account, what Jill here referred to as the rainy day account, that's the reserve funds.
Does that, is that where, uh, snow removal money would come from?
No. That will, the snow removal money wa- is, is taken out of next year's, uh, budget.
'Cause we go into a deficit, and we just pull it out.
We go into a deficit, and then what we usually do is pay that deficit off when free cash is released. And free cash comes from, um, at, towards the end of the year, all of the departments turning all of their budgets, and whatever money is left and not expended-
It's like free money.
But, it's not free.
I, I know.
Don't use that word, I know, I know, I even hate, I even hate calling it free cash, because it's not really free. But, it's, it's, it's leftover monies from all of the accounts, put all together, and then it goes to the state, and the state then certifies it. They, they do all of our accounting, and they say, yes, you're certified for five hundred thousand dollars in free cash. This is what, you know, you could put back into wherever you want. And normally, the mayor and the, and the city council, and the finance committee, the mayor makes a recommendation to maybe put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the reserve account, just to put it away, and-
Yeah, it's a really comprehensive definition, I think.
And, and also new growth is in there too, so-
New growth, yeah.
If you have new, a new development go off, or actually, we had a nice free cash going years ago, because both Park Street and Cottles Street were hitting, so we got extra money from taxes that just came in.
Right.
We got some back taxes.
It's nice, it's, it's a nice check to get, when we get it.
Okay. Second reading, we've already gone over tonight. Smart growth, the reason I put smart growth in it is when I've gone to this, um, planning, the city, the city planning department has the meeting where they talk about, hey, let's talk about what, what our priorities are for the upcoming year. And the word smart growth was, was repeated and repeatedly, repeatedly used. So, smart group, smart growth is simply a model of community development that the planner will use, and by being able to show that you're using a smart growth plan, it opens up the city planning department to a number of grants and funding sources that they would not be able to access if they didn't have a smart growth plan.
Okay.
Essentially, the smart growth concept is that if we build out in the rural, in the rural regions, we're developing land that may or may not have sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, so you have to build all this new infrastructure, spend all this money, why don't we develop our, our areas that already has transportation, public transportation, has, uh, is a walk, infrastructure, the bicycle, the bike paths, everything's available. So, the, the balance to this is, the counterbalance is, if you put up a high-rise downtown, have, where do you park? Do you drive, do you not drive? Do you have that, are people gonna change their habits? There's all sorts of other balancing issues that we have to consider. When we adopt zoning regulations that deal with smart growth, it's balanced, that's our rule.
Jen, Fifth Street Acceptance for the call.
Yeah, we went over there, you guys are good, right?
Yeah, moved.
Miles, we gotta put more miles on the odometer for our town.
Strong mayor form, who has to take on that one?
It is a strong mayor or form of government.
And if we haven't, or if you haven't had it, it's, I don't know many cities and towns, the most, many cities that don't have a strong mayor.
Worcester, part-time city manager, it's really weird.
And their mayor is like more kind of-
Ceremonial.
Ceremonial, kinda like the queen.
Ceremonial mayor.
And then there's a city manager.
So they have selectmen or- They, they have a city council, and they have a town manager, who's basically kind of the CEO of the situation.
Well, it is like a hybrid, isn't it?
It's a very much, it's a weird hybrid.
But typically, like the situation like we have here, where the mayor-
Yeah, we're good friends with the chief of staff over there, so we have that.
Where the mayor has a, a lot of responsibilities over hiring, firing, daily operations. Maybe even when we were talking about our appointments, there are appointments, but because, you know, they work within the city, you know, they essentially are managed by the mayor, and so, now if there's a problem, it comes to us, and we address it as a team, or together, but, um, but yeah, so if you hear that term, it's essentially referring to those governments where the mayor has a large range of responsibility.
And our mayor also sits on the school committee, so.
And, um, I just wanna go back down to the last paragraph of that, 'cause this is one of the first things that Joe, you really talked to me about when I was first coming on as a city councillor, that so many people will, for me, will come up and say, why aren't you demanding more money for the schools? But it's really more of a checks and balances for that, because we don't have the power to demand that as a city council, that any department get more funding. We only have the power to not accept the budget as is, and demand that it's lower funding for the budget.
What is the rationale for that?
We have a pie, and we have to fund each piece of the pie, we have to fund public safety, we have to fund education, we have to fund council on aging, parks and rec. And you'll see that, have you, you got a copy of the budget?
Yeah.
You got a copy of the budget, did you look at it all? You went through it, okay.
My question, though, is not that, my question is why does, do we not have any power to-
That's in our charter.
No, I understand that, but while trying to understand why.
You're looking for their conceptual rationale.
Yeah.
There's no, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but any of the finance meetings that I've been to, where they're talking about the budget, I've seen absolutely no negotiation about any kind of funding, like, you know, we're spending this much on paper, or, and, and how to actually affect change in the budget. I, I see no way to do it, it's come down as-
We're bare bones.
Just-
But I've seen that also as part of the strong mayor form of government, that the mayor doesn't need to-
Right, yeah. That was the option, the mayor makes all those decisions.
I could imagine how that could become chaos, if you had five people in charge of, you know, at some point, someone needs to say, this is my responsibility.
But there should be a way-
Towns do that.
Well, and there should be a way for the finance department to audit where those numbers come from, where it's like, okay, so you say you're gonna increase this by five thousand, where's, where's the paper trail that that needs to be increased? Or, what is the, we spent so much on gasoline with the DPW last year, why is there an increase with this year?
Now, see, I disagree, I'm sorry.
So, your presented information, like, um, you know, the, um, like the police chief will come in with his budget, and the fire chief will come in with his budget, but you don't have the ability to compare it to the prior year's budget.
Oh, you do.
Yes, you do, well, you have last year's budget with you.
We go back-
The budgets aren't available online from the different departments.
But they are available, they're available in the, in the proposed budget.
So, that'll be something that the finance department will have to do, and be like, okay, so you've had a, an increase of twenty percent, is that because gas prices went up? Is that because, you know, grass, gas prices were lower?
We can ask that.
Yeah, and I'm actually quite, I'm with Jen, uh, Joy there, 'cause I, Melissa's been very good, or mayor saying, you know, we lost an employee here, so we're dropping that line item, or, you know, this happened, so this is gonna go up, or the reason why we do that, and I, I find that very, I don't see the documentation.
And when they do the new budget, they always have the old budget side by side, so that they have the FY.
I saw that, and, and I was, and I was comparing the last year to this year, and trying to determine in my own head why things would go up or down, or where it is.
The biggest, the biggest increases are health insurance and, and our insurances.
Yeah.
Liability insurance, health insurance, and-
Yeah, but really, I, usually, I've never had a debt, like, I think JP would agree, if you say, that's odd, why is that? They're right there to say, oh, well, that's because it is.
Yeah, and that's, that's good, okay.
And you'll see, it's funny, 'cause one column is the budget for two years ago, or a year ago, what was the actual budget of what they spent, and then, you know, so it's like-
And then the proposed budget.
I know, 'cause whenever I wanna change my budget, I have to give like a pint of blood.
Yeah.
Anytime I wanna do it, so I just wondered if there was the same accountability of-
Oh, of course, there is.
You're going up and down, I wanna know why you're going up and down.
The charter defines the mayor's proposal, proposed budget, and it does have to reflect information from the previous year. And she, and the mayor is supposed to put in her proposal, or his proposal, an explanation of any devi- any, any deviations, deviations rather, from the previous-
Huge.
But, any, any substantial deviations, any important deviation.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that's, I, I think that's something that we need to look forward to making sure is in the next year's budget, uh, so that the mayor has-
A written, a written record of, 'cause I, a lot of times, I think, I think we get it orally.
We, 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 we get a pay, a budget, we get a one-page budget.
Right, but that's only if you're at the finance subcommittee, then once you, you're at city council, there's no, there, unless you've gone to every budget finance subcommittee meeting, you, you don't get that information.
Well, when, when the, when the book comes to you-
I'd always watch it online.
When the budget comes to us.
You can't reach it to it.
I think it's the responsibility of the mayor, and I think the charter, charter calls for this, for the mayor to explain the budget, the deviations from the past.
And they do, they always have. If you ask, they do, I mean, if it's a huge deviation.
I think I could point out, point out one issue from this past season that wasn't brought up at, at, and that was the funding for the community center. I saw this, it's a huge deviation from previous, that we, that we got Xed out of the budget. Well, I think it's important to say, we used to fund the community center, and now we're not gonna fund, now, now we're not gonna provide funds for the food program, so, anyway.
But I think they, she was had an explanation for it.
But it wasn't, no, that, that came up a week or two later, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it wasn't pointed out, 'cause I, I heard about it before, and I'm like, I'm like, hey, about it.
And I, and so I think it's important to follow the charter, and make sure that any, any, any deviation is brought up.
Is it more than like five percent, or seven percent, or ten percent, or something like that?
Or is it wiped, is the line item wiped out?
Yeah.
I think it's important.
So, if, if you're saying we should make sure that the mayor does this, are you suggesting that we put it into motion, or we-
No, it's already in the charter, it's just-
It's in the charter.
I mean, that's in the clarification.
It's in the charter, and either the charter is followed, or it's not followed.
Uh-huh.
Well, in finance subcommittee, if you see the deviations coming out in the budget, you can ask the mayor, please-
Yes, and the mayor's very good at-
Please, please, please put this down in writing, and put it in as part of the budget, you know, information that these certain thing, line items were changed because of da-da-da-da-da, they can always put that into the budget, the- They can always put that into the budget.
Into the budget message.
Correct, and we don't vote on that until.
No, until we've had our hearings.
Right, and that could be all part of.
But I think it's important when the message is brought forth from the mayor's office to the council that all of the major changes are disclosed and so we can evaluate.
And you can do that early on in the process. You can ask her that now, because she's starting to have her budget. And when we submit our budget to her, you can then ask that that be included in the budget, that there are any deviations over ten percent or something, you know, whatever.
I jotted that down, you know, clarification in charter note regarding mayor explaining budget discrepancies.
So, when we give her our budget, we can say, could you please, in your mayoral.
This is one of those classic cloudy areas for me as a city councillor, where I could say, yeah, I really think I wanna make sure that the mayor has that. There's a big difference from me as an individual councillor going to the mayor saying, I wanna see this, versus Joe as the council president saying, I wanna see this, versus making a formal motion to make sure we have a documented record that we wanna see this. So, this is something that I get mired up in a bit, so I do wanna talk about this. When we have these things that don't fit into a criteria of, okay, there's no need for a motion because of this, then do we just go out on our own and ask the mayor?
Well, I don't think in this case is, there's a need for a motion. I think that as the president, who's working side by side with the mayor on the budget right now, she's asked for our budget from the city council that if the president said to the mayor, in keeping with the charter, could we please, so that we're not ambushed or feeling like we're ambushed or anything else, that if there's any huge deviations in any of the line items, that you make us aware of it in advance.
But I also, I will also stand by that any single person in this room, I think, would be fine, be welcome to the office and say, approach it nicely, hey, Karen, we were going through the charter, it says here, do you do something in writing or how do we get that information?
Yes, she will. She's very open.
I was gonna say, leave my office, it's not your business.
No, she won't do that. She's very open, she's very accepting.
I will certainly do it, get back to you, but I mean, I really think.
Yeah, I prefer to go through the procedure through you rather than doing it casually. I'd like a written record.
Well, also, again, it prevents six people sitting in our office asking the exact question.
Right, exactly. We've all got the same question.
Really? Do you guys not talk to each other? No, we can't, it's open meeting.
Well, and I, I mean, maybe I'll do it in the form of a motion or somebody can yell the form of a motion afterwards, but I think the budget, absolutely, the full budget needs to be on the website. I mean, this is something the community wants to have and it's us in Chickapi, we're like one of the only communities who don't do that.
I'll certainly put that in the form of a motion.
So, motion on the table, put the full budget, once it's accepted, available to the public.
Once it's proposed, once it's proposed. Once, not accepted, once it's proposed.
No, I think it should be accepted.
Once it's accepted.
Once it's accepted by us.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, ratified, why put something that's not been ratified?
A proposed budget is something that enables the community to be aware of what the proposal is and come into the opening hearings, the meetings of the finance committee.
They can come in any of our meetings.
I understand, but if we put the mayor's proposed budget online, then folks can take a look at it.
That can be your motion.
And then they could say, oh, gosh, why are we doing this?
But I think there should be a motion, I can't remember if there's a second on this, but I think this should be a motion to move to finance this request.
I was thinking that.
I mean, I think the request is fine, but I think we move to financed. There was a second.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
No, I agree. I think it should be hashed out to finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's hashed out, Dean.
Well, you're creating a lot of work for yourself.
Motion to put the city budget online after acceptance.
Or it could be discussed.
I would, I would submit a proposal amendment to have that. Can we amend the, yeah, we can.
I thought we were just kind of discussing having all things of disclosing the budget to be moved to the finance committee.
Made before, so can we reconsider?
We'll.
Consider this matter and say.
You just go to finance and state your case.
Wasn't that what we just?
Well, I think we.
I mean, I think the gist of it is putting the budget online. I think the negotiation, negotiation of whether.
Who seconded the motion to put the full city budget online?
Councillor Carey.
I submit, I. To move it to finance.
To move it to finance.
Move it to finance, yes. I seconded the motion to put it online.
Motion to put the full city budget online after acceptance to finance doesn't make any sense.
No, no, no.
Motion to move the discussion of whether it's the proposed budget, the full budget, the approved budget, online, how to do that, where to do it, what's the.
The original motion, I don't think it ever got seconded, I don't think it was received.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so who wants to make?
If it doesn't get a second.
I seconded, I seconded the original.
I made a motion to put the full city budget online after acceptance.
And I seconded.
And then we discussed it and Joe.
And then we never took a vote.
So, we took a vote.
So, this is, so this was, the motion in the second was to put the full budget.
Online.
Right, so.
After acceptance.
After acceptance. So, this is for, you think it should be, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Motion to put the full city budget online after acceptance, seconded by.
I don't think, we don't have a full council here.
That's what I'm gonna say. I'm gonna call rules to order right here. No, I don't think we can take that motion without a full city council and it being on our agenda.
Right, that's why I thought it had to.
That's too big.
That's why I thought it had to go to like rules and regs or something like that.
Yeah, that's too big.
So, we should move it to finance?
Well, you know, we gotta be careful too, as far as our agenda's an orientation for city councillors.
That's right.
I think maybe we should hold off any more of these agendas until.
If somebody in finance in the big, the city council meetings want to make that motion and send it and write up that motion and make it out to the city council, then we can do that.
Yeah, I can do that.
I think we're getting way out of the scope of things. We have gone very far outside.
You know, it's refreshing to be able to speak openly about various things and I think we're generating additional ideas as we do so.
Stay away from motions and things like that until we're at the full city council.
The last one is zoning.
Zoning, zoning.
Oh, that's easy.
I wish I had a map here because it's much easier to just see an overlay of the town and zoning on it.
Yeah.
Green bot there, see them.
They're all one of the.
I couldn't find one that.
Oh, you know what, actually, we just updated our zoning. I have two copies.
Because you can always go to the DPW and they'll have all your copies.
But again, there's not, we'll be quizzing this, but it's good to get a feel. You'll hear people refer to, each of them have different ordinances, building requirements, etc.
We just had to redo our zoning map. We had to redo the zoning map because it was written on paper with a big pen and where the pen was fat, you couldn't tell where the lines were. So, now it's all electronic, which is good. No, my other one is next to my desk, I'm sorry, but you can have that one.
So, again, it's just something to be aware of, the different zones, not that you have to memorize it, but if you hear new business.
Can you read it?
Yeah, exactly.
I know.
It's getting late, but also, which is probably, actually, I think it's perfect because they're probably a whole different meeting, the whole idea of open meeting laws, we have to be aware of it. You know, we may have been in violation of talking about some of the competitor flag issues, so I talked during General's office quite a bit about it and they said, we are here to help with complaints, not to penalize. I think we got a lot of kudos for, you know, she was glad that someone came up front and said, you know, how much it says, but this is very important that literally when that, when I responded to that person with a reply, oh, that was a violation. So, be very careful with email, be very careful with social media. That's why, we have East Hampton City Council Facebook page, which I need to get back on my butt and get it updated, but even there, it's almost, it's gonna be electronic posting because you can't get in a situation where, hey, what did you guys talk about? You know, so, but just be very aware of that fact. And also, as we mentioned earlier, if you get requests, just to be safe, create a PDF, you know, send it off to Barb or a printed copy of Barb, it's just good to have that any of those things that come in have been documented in open meeting. But Jen, I had called earlier to see, because they said on their website they have trainings, well, they haven't offered it for a while, I don't know if it's budgetary or not, I don't know if you got a different answer than I did.
I called and I left a message to see what the criteria would be to how many people we'd have to have for open meeting laws, and I think it'd be a good idea if we had the chairs of all the, the other standing committees go through open meeting.
Most committee members, all of them.
You know, all of them, because, yeah, we're supposed to be setting an example and we just screwed up.
Frustration's always good.
You know, it's a good idea for us to do it, so we'll wait to hear back from them. And like I said, I might reach out to Sully because I know somebody in the office can do that.
I mean, it's always great, I mean, it's, you know, it's kinda frustrating on some levels, I found that in the private sector, me responding immediately and everyone knowing what was going on was a good thing.
Exactly, exactly.
And the public sector.
Gotta be careful.
Right, and that's the thing where it's like in the logic side of it and the legal side of it, because, I mean, when it first happened, I said, we should put this in the public record and then I was late to that meeting and then it was Christmas and then it was a new council, like, I just let too much time go by, but I, you know, I was beating the public record wrong, you know, so.
But I guess you guys got this, right? And I guess supposedly we all got this because of years ago, but there is information on open meeting laws.
Right, and then.
The ethics test?
There's a lot of information.
No, that's not, open meeting isn't the test.
Ethics, yeah, there's a lot of stuff online, videos and stuff, so there's a lot of.
If in doubt, pick up the phone and call.
Yeah, they're very responsive.
That's all you do. If in doubt, pick up the phone and call.
So, yeah, I can let you know what happens with that.
Never talk about council business outside of conference chambers.
If they say, oh, if you have fifteen people together, because I talked to somebody and who was with more at one event or something.
If a resident calls me, I'll listen to them.
If you have fifteen people together, we'll totally come to it, so I think that's.
Well, in my opinion, but I'll listen to them, you know.
Yeah, and especially with all the.
I'll take that into consideration.
Redoing all of the public access documents now, right now.
I don't make my mind up usually until.
Rosenberg is really.
I've gathered all the information, what are you thinking, I'm not like Jonathan right now, I'm just gathering information.
Our favorites are, we get compliant as fast as possible. Do you have any questions?
Probably a million, huh?
No, actually, no, I think it was, it was great. Thank you for putting this together.
For the opportunity to have this discussion.
Yeah, that alone.
And thank you for the other councils for attending. And actually, this is really important because, as again, this is the first time we tried anything like this, so be honest, what you thought helped, what you thought didn't help, did we get too off track? Did that?